I will entertain a motion.
I'll let the motion go back until possession.
Second.
Motion being second, all in the head. Jim?
Aye.
Chairman.
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Could we all stand for the pledge allegiance to be followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, two members of the Dyton community have passed. Kyle G. Souza, age 58 of Dyton, passed away on September 10th. He was the son of our retired council on aging leader and primetime director, Alice Souza. Besides his mother, Alice, Kyle is survived by his loving companion, Ramona Sherman. His sisters, brothers, Karen Gazza, Cheryl Wick, Kevin Souza, and Eric Souza. I would mention that there will be a wake, I'm sorry, funeral. The funeral will be Friday, September 16th at 8:30 a.m. at Silver Funeral Home. And there will be visiting hours on Thursday, September 15th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Silver Funeral Home. Also passing was Jennifer Ann Gaetly, who passed on August 24th. Jennifer lived in North Dyton. She was missed, survived by her husband, Stephen Gaetly, her children, Dylan and Devon, and her parents, Dawn Stuber and Deborah Stuber, and her brother, Jim, also of Ohio. Thank you. Could I have just a moment? Thank you very much. Scheduled for this evening is a poll hearing in regards to the relocation of polls on Main Street and Williams Street. The first polls to be discussed by National Grid are 35 jointly owned on Main Street. Mr. Mullen, who will be speaking on behalf of National Grid?
Yes, we do, we do have a Mr. Jeff Silver from National Grid on Zoom. Mr. Silver, if you could unmute yourself and present an overview of the, of I believe the first 35 polls, that would be helpful.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jeff Silver, National Grid. The polls to be relocated, pushing them further back for, I believe it's ADA for the sidewalks, and also they're going to be reconducting that area with spacer cable, which is a newer type of cable that's more reliable than the open construction that you typically see on the street.
Mr. Silver, based on your requests, I have a request from a citizen in regards to a poll on the corner of Williams and Main Street. And I would like to make you aware of what he is asking for.
Poll 48 or poll 49, so I know which one I'm looking at?
Poll 49.
Okay.
Could you please, the letter asks if the Board of Selectment would advocate for the removal of poll B 49. Not many street corners require a brace. I'm sure the wise, intelligent people could figure out a way to support these wires without the need of a brace that he describes as being hideous.
So the reason that that pole would need a brace is because of the amount of tension that is on that, the new wire that we're putting up. And for it to feed down Main Street, there's a lot of, there's about 3,000 PSI of tension going back the other way. And that's why the brace is most likely required at that, at that point, because spacer cable has more tension than regular open arm construction.
Now, he, he sent us a picture, and I'm looking at the brace right now. And I kind of have to agree with him that it does look, is there any other way than a pole leaning up against another pole to be used as a brace? Could two pole, could a pole be put in right beside it and the wiring be redistributed so the other pole will take some of the weight off of it?
The way it would potentially, they could potentially fix that would be put a pole across the street as a stub pole to hold that pressure back, and then they would have to put an anchor on that pole across the street.
What type of anchor, similar to what I'm looking at?
Would be a guide wire type of thing.
Oh, a guide wire, okay.
Yep. Let me, let me see if I can get to William Street and Main through Google.
Yeah, Williams and Main, right at the intersection.
So the, hmm, I'm looking at it right now. Yeah, the, the other option would be to put a pole on the opposite side of William Street and then anchor it into the grass to support that pressure going back down Main Street. That would be the only other potential option that we could have. Again, you have new spacer cable going up, which is a more cluster-like system that you guys may see it sometimes. It's, it looks like three wires together and it has a, a wire up top that has all the tension on it. That has more pressure than the typical open arm construction that you're doing now.
I'd be interested to hear what my colleagues have to say. I, I like that approach, seems more logical than what I'm looking at right there.
I can, I can speak to the design, designer that is doing the job to see if he can go in that direction. Again, this isn't my design. I'm just here for the company to discuss and answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mullen, we're not voting on this this evening, correct?
The, so there are two sets of pole relocations on here. What we're talking about, I believe, is included in the second request, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
About these on the agenda for your consideration and approval.
Now, in regards to this poll, poll 49, I believe it is.
So if I can, if I can interject real quick, I, I don't see in the new design that there is a push brace on the new pole that's being relocated, because they would have shown that if that was the case.
Okay. So.
But what assurance do we have? I don't have any design showing what that brace will look like. I, I have maps from National Grid with dots and X's on it.
Right, so if, if there was going to be a push brace on the relocated pole, in the legend, there would have had a push brace depiction on that pole showing that there would be a push brace on that pole. And I don't see one there. He may have missed it, but it is not depicted in the legend showing that there will be a push brace that is going there.
But I don't see anything, just, just, I don't see anything that shows me or describes in words what that brace is going to look like.
Well, he's indicating that he doesn't see the brace. I think when we get to the second set of polls, those five polls on Williams Street, that we make a motion to approve that, but not to put any brace on B 49. If that becomes an issue down the road, they come back to us.
Okay.
I wouldn't want it in my front yard.
What's that?
Say, I wouldn't want it in my front yard.
And I don't necessarily want to move it to another person's, cross the street.
You can't just cross the street with the same, same look.
In regards to this project, since it's on the roads, will Mr. Ferry be a representative at the site?
Yes, he has been, and he has been, he's been leading the efforts with National Grid to get us, to get us here this evening, because at the relocation of the 35, of the proposed location of the 35 poles, like, in the, in the first request, and then the proposed relocation of the five jointly owned poles, like those, are those, are those, all, are the, are those, do all relate to the roadway reconstruction that's planned, that's planned for Main Street.
Could I ask that Mr. Ferry come up?
Evening.
Good evening. Have you had any discussions with the designers of this project as to what their conceptual for this poll 49?
That poll in particular, no. You, you bring up a good question. There is a lot of weight that this, that corner pole is currently holding, and the new pole is going to be holding more weight than what the current pole is. I would like you guys to interject that, your comment for them to review that, that poll, and I believe it's 114 on the other attachment, because that's the next poll east.
If we don't approve this this evening, on the five polls on Williams Street, I believe, is what we're talking about, what are the repercussions? Or will they just continue to do it anyway? Can we stop this?
The job, the job will not progress until both have been approved.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they just, they, they want your comments, this, this is what they're looking for.
And our approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they want the town of Dyton happy, and this is going to work. Yes. So, like I suggested, poll 114.
That's on Main Street?
Yes, that's, that's on your next attachment. That's, it would literally be the first one on Main Street when you're going on, because this, this poll you're talking about is actually on Williams.
Williams, right.
So that poll that you brought up and then 114 would, those two things should be addressed to your concerns.
But they are on two separate proposals here this evening.
So I can see the brace on, on poll 49, but is there a brace on poll 114 on Main Street as well?
I don't know, because we don't have any.
There is an anchor. 114 has a, a guide wire.
Okay.
That pushes the pressure back going down Main Street from Williams.
Right.
But we haven't heard, or the board hasn't heard any concern about the anchor in the guide wire.
No.
What we have heard about, like, is the brace, like, on Williams Street, but if there's nothing in the proposed, if there's nothing in the proposed plan that act, that actually reflects that there would be a brace, oh, you, oh, you know, like, I, I don't disagree with the Selectment, Pacheco, the board of this, if this is the only feedback, the board could consider approving this with the, with the requirement to make it abundantly clear that a brace not be, oh, you know, part of the plan.
Mr. Ferry.
Yes.
Regarding poll number 114, do you have concerns?
No, and this is the first I'm hearing, is actually a problem with the brace pole, so that caught me off guard. If, if I may ask Jeff a question?
Certainly.
Jeff, on, back on Main Street on poll 113, is there an anchor and guide on that one also pulling, pulling the weight?
There is an anchor and guide on 114, but that one, on 113, but that one looks to be a Verizon guide, based on what I'm looking at on Google Earth.
That, so that might be holding the weight that we're talking about?
That one's holding the weight of the Verizon wires on that section of pole.
Okay.
113, 113, correct?
Yes.
So 113, there's a guide wire that goes back towards Williams Street. It's about 10 feet off of the pole, and it, it is holding back the pressure from the Verizon line that, they have a decent sized pump there. Then there's an anchor at the stop sign, which is ours, which goes into the primary gain and also the secondary gain. And that is approximately seven feet off of the pole.
Okay.
And you're satisfied with the 35 polls on Main Street as proposed?
The, the rest of the street?
Yes.
At, at this time, yes, yes.
Since they're two separate items, I will take them separately. The first is a request to relocate 35 jointly owned polls on Main Street. I will note that, for the record, the Highway Superintendent, Thomas Ferry, supports this request, and I will entertain a motion for approval for the 35 jointly owned polls on Main Street.
Before I make a motion, or Selectmen Karen make a motion, I wonder if I ADA coordinate can speak on this, since we're talking about making the sidewalk ADA compliant, and these polls are going to be moved. Are you satisfied with what's been described?
Can, can you hear me from here?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So the answer to the question is, I was not aware of the pole placements until recently. I didn't receive any of the plans until recently, if you don't fault of any of us in particular, frankly. However, my concern is where the poles are placed in relationship to the intersections. So there's two parts of it. One is how they're going to be placed in terms of the sidewalk and the width of the sidewalk, and it needs a minimum of 36 inches, which I believe from what I've been able to tell so far, and that explained to me as well as will. My bigger concern is where the poles are going to be at the intersections, at each of the cross intersections, and how those might be placed in relationship to the grill pad slash crosswalk. Because if any of them are, as have happened in the past, we don't fault the end of the pole, almost up against that pad, that impedes, you know, they may have to be that way for turn radius, but on the other hand, it potentially impedes the grill pad placement, or anybody needing to use that crosswalk placement who has any sort of disability at all and needs that turn radius, in a wheelchair or in a walker or anything like that. So I guess if it were up to me, I would ask you to take it under advisement, at least until the next meeting, so that I have a chance to speak to Mr. Ferry and to the utility as well, and make more determination for those intersections. Other ones, I think, are okay, that are not placed between the intersections. But my concern again is the turn radius and the down radius of where any of the grapple is going to be placed as this would pole. So that as the pole is coming, as you're going down to that area, if you have a pole just off my left shoulder here, but impedes vision for somebody who might be in a wheelchair or for a driver, for somebody in a wheelchair who's in a lower radius, that, that's concerning.
Mr. Gale, I concur wholeheartedly, and thank you. I have many concerns with this proposal this evening. Before I ask for a motion, I will, any further discussion, Mr. Karen?
No, the only thing I want to comment on is both the 114 and 49 don't show any anchors, all 113 on the plans.
Mr. Karen, based on what I have in front of me right now, there are many questions, and these are not what I consider good designs to try to convince a Board of Selectment to make a decision this evening. So what I'm going to recommend is that a motion to table this, and as Mr. Gale said, take this under advisement. And Mr. Gale, Mr. Ferry, meet with National Grid and come back before us with a plan that's more than little zero circles and X's on a hand-sketched map. I'd like to see a, you know, a professional plan. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to table this.
You don't want to table it?
I just think we ought to ask Mr. Silver where his plans are for those intersections. We might be able to be solved that tonight.
Just table the whole thing.
Yeah. So, Mr. Silver, did you hear the comments from my ADA coordinator, Jonathan Gale, regarding the intersections and where the poles are going to be placed on those intersections?
I did.
Milk Street, Elm Street, other?
Main Street.
Main and Williams.
Right. And Milk Street.
It's, I think you're talking about, Mr. Gale, all the poles down Williams, I mean, Main Street, several streets, these.
I think there are six, there are six intersections, I think.
Butt Plain, Elm, Milk, Lilio, I think it is, and there's another one, at least another one, and maybe School. So did you hear that, and what's your response to his concerns, Mr. Silver?
My response is, I would have to speak to George, who is the designer of the project, to see how he took that into consideration. I can't speak for what his thoughts were in his design, but I can reach out to him and have him contact Mr. Gale and Mr. Ferry to discuss the concerns that they do have and have the job proceed as needed by the town of Dyton.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to table the agenda item under scheduled appointments of the relocation of 60, excuse me, 35 jointly owned poles on Main Street.
As well as the anchors, not just the location of the poles.
Well, we're just going to table.
We're going to table, and hopefully we're going to get some response.
They're going to get back to us, I want them to get back to us on the anchors as well.
As well, yes.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second, all those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. I will entertain a motion to table the National Grid request to relocate five jointly owned poles on Williams Street.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Karen, aye. Chairman Hull is an aye. This will be tabled. Mr. Ferry, Mr. Gale, could you, through Mr. Mullen, arrange for a meeting? Mr. Mullen, could you also be a part of this meeting as well?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, Chief Cronin, to review, discuss, and act a memorandum of agreement in regards to the administrative sergeant's position. Chief, could you explain to the public what you're proposing?
Yes, so, right now, according to the job description adopted and approved by the town, we actually don't have anybody in-house that will, that meets the requirements of lieutenant position. So in order to develop and groom somebody into that, I'm asking the town, in collaboration with the union, to adopt an administrative sergeant position to do just that, get somebody trained and groomed into that lieutenant role.
Mr. Karen and Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
I'm supporting this.
I'm supporting it as well.
We have a memorandum of agreement between the town of Dyton, the Dyton Police Officers' Local 306 Mass Coalition of Police for the position of administrative sergeant. I will entertain a motion to accept or enter into this agreement.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, act on a request to appoint Kenneth Elmira as a reserve officer.
All right, so Kenny's here tonight. He's been working with us now for a few years in a capacity through Bristol County Sheriffs. He has attained the rank of lieutenant, K-9 officer with Bristol County Sheriff, and about three months ago, he kind of relayed his interest to me on becoming a reserve officer here in town. I've never seen an officer, I'm not just saying this because he's here, but I've never seen an officer with as many certifications as he has. He is a certified MPTC trainer in at least a dozen different disciplines. He's a master trainer that I know of in at least two, right? And that is his bread and butter. He loves training. It's immediate value as an asset to us, to our training collaborative with Taunton, CCONC, Rainham. He's going to bring all kinds of tools with him. Biggest thing is, you know, I've been talking about post and reform now for about a year and a half. Kenny actually attained his post-C certification in June. So he is a certified mass police officer, and there is literally zero cost to the town to onboard this very highly qualified gentleman.
Mr. Mullen, anything you would like to add?
No, I just strongly support the chief's recommendation based on everything he's presented.
I have no questions.
No questions, I think it's a great idea.
I will entertain a motion to appoint Kenneth Elmira as a reserve Dyton police officer.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, board.
Welcome aboard. Thank you. Regarding the body camera policy update, Mr. Mullen?
Yes, so one of the things, when we worked with the union and when we worked with the chief over the summer, and actually for the better part of the last year, actually, on a body, on a mandatory body one camera agreement with the police union, like we all anticipated and expected, the proposal and the implementation of, like, a policy governing that implementation to come forward from the chief. And as I mentioned, he's been working together with, like, with the men and women of the DPD to craft this policy for the better part of the last eight to nine months or so. And the chief wanted to bring it forward, to present it, you know, to the board, just to share it with the board, so we can keep moving things forward for the implementation of the body one camera program as well.
Yeah, so we're in the middle of a complete revamp of all of our policies. This one, we like to get going sooner than later. We did form a committee back in December, and we've been working on finding a policy that suits Dyton. There are a ton of policies out there. But in my opinion, you have to be very careful on what goes into those policies, because they may not pertain to your specific situation. So we've been working hard on it. So, we've been working hard on it and this is the fifth revision of this one that we've come up with and it's actually been fairly easy working with the union back and forth. There's some things in there that they may not necessarily agree with, but that's policy and that's what, you know, ultimately it's going to end up being. But they've had a lot of input into this and we've met, we've gone down that road pretty easily, so I'm excited about getting this going. On the device side, we were approved through a grant last year, which we still have, so to speak, with the state. The challenge, like most of everything else going on around us, is cost is just sky-high. So, when we finally did our scope of what we were looking for and sent out to five different companies, we demoed three different body cams. I followed up with agencies in Ohio, Tennessee, Pennsylvania, Illinois, everywhere, trying to get feedback on these different devices and software. That's another big part of it. We were finally able to get it down to what we actually would work for us. When we got the quote back, it was almost double of what our grant was for. Knock on wood, the state came out with an email and said, hey, by the way, if you haven't exhausted your funds from FY22, we're going to work with you in FY23. So, that grant has been redone, resubmitted two weeks ago, and we're waiting on the word, probably the next week, week and a half or so, to fully cover the cost of this implementation as far as devices and software. So, sometimes patience works out.
And the union is on board with this as well?
They are. They are, yep. You know, there's some apprehension just because it's new and you don't know what you don't know, but in fact, it's interesting that Kenny's here tonight because him and I have had conversations about body worn cameras and they employ them down with Bristol County and especially in his line, and he'd probably be the first one to tell you that nobody should be on the road without.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, it's good all around.
And this body camera policy will also include the harbor masters?
And ACO, yes. Anybody that's out there in a law enforcement capacity dealing with the public will be wearing a body cam.
Thank you very much. So, where do we go from here? Since this is not an action item, we, I don't have a policy in front of me.
Yeah, I just wanted to share this with you to, you know, just reinforce that we are working on it. Like most things with the state, it is slower. But we're ready to go. As soon as we can, we have the funds available, we do the procurement, we do the training, we can roll out our own body one cam program. All the, all the hard work's been done. So, we're ready to go.
I'd rather wait on voting on a policy because you know how things change at the state level and that may impact any rules that we may have to change. So, time-wise, do you figure another year?
No.
Six months?
No, I'm optimistic that if things go through, I'm looking first of the year. I'm thinking January, we should be ready to go. Because if the funding is available, we can procure everything in October, everything ships within two weeks, and it's just training. It's training to get everything onboard, policy review, and rolling it out, so.
How much time do you need between us, our approval and you get to get started?
Well, clarification, I don't think I need approval for the policy, right?
Yeah, the chief has the ability to issue his own department policies. But when we, but when we were discussing the MOU with the union, oh, you know, to really get here and to get to a policy and to secure the grant funding as well, the board had an interest in, oh, you know, like in having regular updates relating to the drafting and the implementation of the policy. So, that's what we wanted to follow along with.
Yeah, I just want to keep you guys up to speed. That's the biggest thing.
No, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions?
I just, I read the policy. I think it's a great policy. It answered all my concerns. I did believe that the chief had the authority to come up with this policy, but we did ask that you bring it to our attention so we can at least take a look at it. If we have any concerns or any questions, we can bring it to your attention, but I think it's a good policy.
Yeah, if there's any questions on it, I can, I'm happy to answer them.
No, I guess my only concern is the state, when they would come through with their funds and how reliable is it?
So, that was a phone call. It wasn't an email from me. They've been great, the officer grants and research has been great with our traffic grant policy. The first round of funding with body one cam, and then it was actually a phone call to update us that they said, hey, you know, hold off because we have another round of funding coming out and we might be able to help these departments that haven't procured yet because of the funding challenge. So, in a conversation I had with the administrator of this grant, she was very informative, very clear that the decisions will be had by the end of September because there are so many departments literally begging for help to get their programs going. So, I would say, you know, it is the state, but by the second week of October, we should have a pretty good idea of where we are. So, but a month.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for everything tonight.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation from the Board of Health. But before I begin, I would like to set some ground rules for this discussion. Proposed restructure plan, job description of the health agent is something that has been discussed since 2019. Couple of board meetings ago at the Board of Health, I said that we, the Board of Selectmen, would make this a priority and that we would work diligently to have everything in place sometime before Christmas. This evening is the beginning of a process that I know will take several meetings. This evening, I am going to only allow, under this agenda item, discussion and input from members of the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen, and Town Administrator Mullen. With that being said, the public will have their opportunity and public input to add additional comments. This evening, we will hear from the Board of Health. There's a great deal of information for us to review and I would strongly recommend that we schedule another meeting to deal uninterrupted with just this issue. So that we're not looking at the clerk or worrying about the alarm going off at 11:00 at night. With that being said, I, before I have, Ms. Katavia, will you be leading the discussion? I do have a question, which we, I see all the members of the Board of Health here and I see someone on Zoom. Who is that person? Is there any way of record?
We were watching downstairs and knowing it was time to come up, so we were working at the desk.
Oh, okay, okay.
I can go shut it off if you'd like.
No, 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 I was just curious if there was another member of the Board of Health, former member of the Board of Health that we had discussed, if he, if that was him. With that being said, Mrs. Katavia, could you come up, please?
I am Barbara Katavia, Board of Health Chair. Ever since I walked in the Board of Health office five months ago, I was amazed at the amount of prints, plans, and files that they were working on, never mind answering phone calls and attending the walk-in counter. I had no idea the amount of work the health inspector and administrative assistant are responsible for with no clerical help. But the town administrator and selectmen have thankfully been receptive to this very big amount of work that is very important and vital to the town of Dayton. Therefore, the Board of Health has worked out two plans for restructuring the workload and duties of the Board of Health. It has also compiled the health inspector agent job description and stormwater agent for your consideration. Therefore, Todd Pilling, health agent inspector, and Nicole Mello, Board of Health member and town nurse, will present for your consideration these plans. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With that being said, Ms. Katavia?
I'm sorry?
Will Mr. Pilling or Ms. Mello be addressing the board?
We both will, if that's your thing.
Together?
Yes.
That is fine. Please come up.
I just want to start quickly by mentioning that we're here because we're aware that we could provide better quality to the residents of Dayton, and that's our main goal throughout this, is that we want to provide better care, we want to be able to give the residents what they need. And right now, how we operate, we can't. So, we're aware of that and we want to fix this and we're hoping that you guys will help us with that. You'll see, we have a number of options. The first one is option one. It's easier to see when comparing it with the second option what the differences are. This has an added clerk, you can see, as well as solid waste is on there, as well as the transfer station, which are things that we currently have, but when you're looking at option two, they are not on option two. We have concluded the job description for the health agent for each of the options because they would change because there's different components to each of them. Have you had a chance to read over the job descriptions? Yes?
Yes. As I said, we, this evening, we would rather not get into it because of the length of our agenda. And I would like these discussions to be a give and take and a negotiation, if you will.
Oh, most definitely.
Because ultimately, whatever we are going to do is going to impact contract negotiations for Mr. Pilling. And I see this as a four-part process. And I'm not sure which order we'll take them in, based upon our next meeting, where we will kind of, although certain sections have to be done in open session, the reorganization, the job description have to be in open session. Keeping in mind that whatever we do will affect Mr. Pilling. And with that in mind, there needs to be a give and take and negotiations, if you will. Mr. Pilling, do you have anything to add before I open it up to Mr. Mullen and the members of the board?
Yeah, just two things. Number one is, I think this structure also affects other people, like for example, emergency prep is one of the things we're dealing with now that we'd be, it's not in this current structure, so whoever's getting that needs to be involved. Animal inspector is not on this chart either and that, again, that would affect somebody else too. So, other people need to be involved besides just us.
Yes.
The other thing is, on both of these charts, you'll see that the health agent would become the department head in both those scenarios, and they also have an administrative agent in there, under them. Because right now, the health agent myself, there's a lot of times when I just can't get there and it would be nice to have somebody in the office who's able to do that. I have a backup assistant for weekends and vacation coverage, but the need is always there for having somebody to do some of the minor inspections and some of that kind of stuff. So, that's part of both of these.
As we go forward, you mentioned the animal control officer position. I'm also looking at stormwater, solid waste. Those are all going to be lengthy conversations. And as we create agenda for meetings and dealing what we feel is manageable and how much time we want to spend in a meeting in the early stages, we'll invite those parties to also be involved. I, I think it's very important that we take this step by step so we're not all over the place in regards to where we want to go. Because we want to do this, streamline it with much thought. Unless you have anything further, I'll, Mr. Mullen, do you have anything you would like to add?
No, I just really want to echo what has, what has really been said. You know, we've been talking about it, we've had a few, we've had a few starts and stops over the last year or so. But I think what we have, what we have and what we're presented with from, from the Board of Health this evening is a really, you know, like is like a good jumping off point, you know, that we can really take some time and go through, we can tweak and we can really make sure it works for what all of us are really trying to do here. So, I, I'm really encouraged by it and I'm optimistic about, you know, how we can go forward. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
I have no questions, but I agree with you, it's not going to, it's not going to happen tonight, it's not going to happen at the next meeting, but it's a long conversation.
Mr. Karen?
I guess my question is, how did this, the two options, become decided upon? Option one, option two? Who came up with them?
This is a proposal.
So, I'll do a little of that, but for the most part, Todd will go into it. I did ask that they kind of track what they do on a daily basis. Now, it was only a month that they tracked it, so it's not the most accurate information, but Todd does know what generally they do and that seasonally it will change, and he based that off of what they see the most in the office, what's taking his most time. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, I'll just say that the two of us are operating above our capacity. We have been for a while and I think we're nearing burnout. And we either need to hold a body in the office to help or we need to give up some of the work. We've already presented something like six or eight different option structure formats that have all been rejected, and so these are the latest two as a result of the board sitting down and coming up with what we wanted.
After reviewing it, I'm going to give you some homework. I notice there is very little explained or pointed out here in regards to some of the other Board of Health functions that you do. In regards to your involvement with the state and also, I'll give you an example. One of your powers and roles is that you can close down a facility for unsanitary conditions. That includes a home, and I don't see it referenced here.
Well, it just says housing. But we didn't, I mean, if you wanted me to, these would each be like a half-page description, and this was meant to be the rough framework, so.
Mr. Mullen, that was what, chapter 111?
So, yeah, like I just, I mean, one of, I, yeah, just really, I guess, piggybacking, I mean, as, oh, you know, like as we go forward in the job description itself, I mean, like I would like to find a way to reference all the responsibilities in chapter, oh, like in sections 26 through 33 of chapter 111, just so the position of health agent in the job description actually encapsulates all of that. But that, like, is something I think we can, oh, yeah, talk about and work through as we, as we go through this process.
Yeah, I didn't think the board was going to vote tonight to accept option whatever and the job description. I assume there's going to be discussion on that.
But I didn't, I didn't know if that was included here, you know, understood, but I had some questions in regards to what specifically is done in some of these positions.
Sure, I mean, there's stuff, I mean, we don't list everything on here, like Tripoli or West Nile virus, so, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's not specifically listed, but, you know, we can elaborate on anything you'd like.
Well, that would be, you know, for the, for the next meeting. With that being said, unless anyone has any questions, we really should pick a date or allow Mr. Mullen to work with myself to establish a date with?
Are we talking an evening meeting again or would it be a daytime or?
Probably an evening meeting.
Yeah, so all the boards would be available?
Yes.
Available to attend and participate? So, I mean, I mean, if it is the will of everyone here, I'd be happy to follow up to, to come up with some dates over the next month. So, I can, we can actually set up those, we can actually set up the dates at the same up those, or we can actually set up the dates at the same time, so we're not, so, like, we can all plan forward, not going from one meeting to another, uh, so we can have, hopefully, an endgame to this whole process.
And I would, I would advocate for it being joint meetings, rather than a representative from the Board of Health and one from the Board of Selectment, that there be joint meetings with all, all the parties that will be discussing these issues. Just so Mr. Karen and Mr. Pacheco know, the Board of Health has had many discussions on this matter prior to this meeting, so they've had several prep meetings to prepare for, you know, this evening and their proposals, so. Mr. Mullin, you will get back to us on some dates, so.
Yeah, if that, if that's okay with everybody? Okay.
Thank you very much.
I just have one question. What are we thinking about that the next meeting would entail, just in regards to preparation for our?
One of the things that I would hope, and I'm saying this is, is the chairman, is that Mrs. Cotabia, as the chairman of the Board of Health, myself, and Mr. Mullin will sit down, and we will draw up an agenda. So, I will get input from Mr. Karen and Mr. Pacheco, and you'll do the same with Ms. Mello and?
I agree.
Okay?
I'm available anytime.
All right, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, we have something else.
We do have, oh, I'm sorry, do you, Mr. Pilling?
No, no, we're just, we're B and C, so, I told her not to leave the podium.
Oh, okay, thank you. Review, discuss, and act on a recommendation to dissolve emergency preparedness committee. Mr. Mullin?
Uh, yeah, we do have, uh, we do have our correspondence, um, here, recommendation from the Board of Health that was also recommended to the Board of Health, um, uh, by the emergency preparedness committee. The Board of Health email is dated September 12th. Dear Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health met on Thursday, September 8, 2022, to transfer oversight of the emergency preparedness committee to the fire chief and to dissolve the emergency preparedness committee. It was moved by Shaleen Bonafon, second by Nicole Mello, and voted unanimously on a rule called "vote to dissolve the emergency preparedness committee" and transfer oversight to the fire chief as requested by the emergency preparedness committee, assigned by Barbara Cotabia, Chairman of the Dayton Board of Health.
Any feedback from Chief McGee?
Uh, the chief, um, I actually attended, uh, the emergency prepar-, uh, the emergency preparedness committee, um, where this, where this recommendation was made by the committee. Uh, this is, um, this recommendation comes as an effort, really, to streamline, um, a lot of our emergency response efforts, um, like, in coordination efforts under one, uh, like, under one central town official. Uh, the fire chief already serves as the, as the town's emergency management director, uh, so he, so he is responsible, uh, uh, you know, for, like, emergency preparedness response, and, uh, you know, um, uh, uh, short of there being, um, an emergency dispensing site, uh, you know, actu-, uh, actually set up, which is under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health and the Health Department, the, uh, uh, the fire chief really does, uh, have the responsibility, uh, like, under his role, uh, you know, to manage emergency response efforts. He, uh, through our public safety officials and employees, uh, you know, uh, he is responsi- he is responsible, like, for managing, uh, uh, different type of environmental, like, response efforts as well, so this is, like, in my view, a natural fit, uh, that, uh, that really allows us, uh, to grow, continue professionalizing, uh, like, in streamlining a lot of the functions, so, I, I do also recommend it as well.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Karen?
Uh, no, but is this just, just the fire chief, or are we including anybody else?
Um, the, uh, the, uh, the fire chief, um, in accordance, I believe, with, uh, with the federal and state requirements, is, um, is required on, on an annual basis to bring together what is called, like, an LEC, uh, you know, like, of appropriate town officials, uh, like, who would be involved in emergency response efforts. Um, so, yeah, he's respons-, he's responsible on his own for doing that to begin with. Uh, like, we did, uh, you know, um, and those officials would include, uh, the ADA coordinator, um, uh, the public health nurse, uh, uh, the police, uh, uh, the police, uh, the police department as well, uh, so this is something he's already responsible for.
Okay.
Uh, like, and really, the structure, uh, that, uh, we're recommending really going to, uh, is a structure, uh, that virtually every community around here follows as well. Uh, like, we were really unique, uh, like, in the fact that we had an emergency preparedness committee, uh, in the first place, because every other, uh, like, every other town really, uh, like, really reflects that position, uh, like, in the town's emergency management director, uh, which in, uh, which in most small towns, uh, is the fire chief.
Right, okay. I just want to point out, that's an LEPC.
LEPC.
And there's, like, 23 members of that committee, which is why we formed the Emergency Preparedness Committee, to make it only, like, five members, so you could very quickly, boots-on-the-ground kind of thing, but that big group is an annual thing, and deals with other stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to approve, to dissolve the emergency preparedness committee.
I so move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen? Chairman Hallow is an aye, the motion passes. Review and discuss an act, um, recommendation regarding COVID-19 case reporting by the Board of Health to the Board of Selectment. Ms. Mello, will you be speaking?
Yes.
Your recommenda-, your request?
Um, so I'm making the recommendation that that end at this time, um, it's no longer necessary. The numbers that I receive in Maven are just based off anyone that goes and gets PCR tested, there's a lot of at-home testing, um, and at this point, there's nothing really to do with the numbers that we can do. People know what they need to do, and keeping track of it is really difficult now that we don't know what's happening at home. This does take away time from the, um, health agent completing this report, it is timely, um, and I just don't see the value in it anymore.
Now, should there be a spike? Do you have a number where you would come before us and, um, say, we need to start tracking again?
I don't see any time that I would start tracking again, because I'm getting them myself, like, any, it's now become like any disease. I don't report all the other diseases to the board, um, so I just don't see it's necessary to report this one, especially if we did have a spike, we're, we're not going to do anything differently than what we're doing.
So, regarding Selectman Hallow's question, though, if there is a spike, will you report it to the board?
Yes, I would.
Yeah.
And that would, that goes for any disease process that I get. If I see that there's an issue, I would report it to the board.
No, thank you.
I think the time has come and gone, we don't need it anymore.
Okay.
I agree.
With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, end Board of Health reports on COVID-19 cases to the Board of Select.
I so move second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hallow is an aye. Thank you very much.
I do have a question for Nikki, if you don't, if you don't mind. The new boosters that are coming up, can you let the public know what the statuses of the boosters and who's eligible?
So, I, I believe who's eligible is still who was previously eligible. Um, I'm not sure in regards to if you got the last booster, the timeframe to get this new one. Um, I know it was, it was very vague on the site, it said, "From your last vaccine," so it didn't specify between booster or the primary series, it would be two months, and then it's four months after you've contracted COVID, is what there. So, this vaccine differs from the last one as it is encompassing more of the variants. Um, it still has, like, the original, and then two of the sub-variants of the Omicron. So, I would reach out to your, um, I know they don't give them at the provider's office, but the provider can give you guidance in regards to where you stand in what booster you're at.
And I, one other question, I'm not sure the other one's going to answer it, but we have some COVID tests, the town has some COVID tests?
Yes, we've been, um, you can get those at the Board of Health, you can get those at the library, as well as the counseling agent has been giving them out, um, and that's during regular business hours.
I was wondering if there was any available for the food bank, for the people who come to the food bank?
Yes, that was on our list, wasn't it?
Yeah, we made some available last month, um, I left a box outside of, uh, but is the next food bank this weekend?
It's, yes.
Okay, I will.
Saturday, okay.
I will make some available for that as well, Mr. Pacheco.
If you want to give, I got to see you tomorrow, if you want to give them to me tomorrow.
Yeah, that sounds awesome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Board of Assessors, Chairman William Moore, to discuss the role of the fence viewer and the field driver.
Ladies and gentlemen. William Moore, Board of Assessors, fence viewer, field driver. Um, I want to start by thanking you very much for appointing me to the fence viewer job, where I have to insert myself in the middle of angry neighbors. It is never dull.
That's why you get paid the big bucks.
That's why I get paid the big bucks, yeah. Um, so, uh, after, um, being appointed to this committee, I was then told I was the chairman, um, and so I, I tried to go looking into what, um, what these roles actually pertain. Uh, I'd like to state for the record that I'm here, um, as a member, I am not representing the entire board for this discussion, and I'm looking for your opinion. So, I think for the fence viewer, it's pretty clear, I mean, so, just back up a little bit, uh, the, the entire role of fence viewer and field driver is, uh, clear, the roles are clearly defined by Mass. General Law, Chapter 49, um, and it's great detail of all the stuff that these roles are supposed to do. Um, and I don't think I have any questions on the fence viewer, uh, it's pretty clear. The only things I would, uh, like to say is, uh, first of all, I, the paper I got said it was an appointment for two years, and according to Mass. General Law, it's supposed to be one year. Um, so I think we should look at, you know, reappointing, uh, come one year from now, and it probably would match, you know, since we're the Board of Assessors as well, you know, as people come and go on a yearly basis, I think sticking with a one-year appointment would probably be best. That's my recommendation on that. We're also supposed to get paid five bucks a day. I don't know how that's supposed to happen, but, um, uh, just wanted to point that out, um, that it's right in the Mass. Law, but I'm more concerned about the field driver, and in case, um, for anybody that doesn't know, you know, what is a field driver according to the state law? A field driver is basically when we're talking about domestic, uh, livestock. If there's livestock in town that somebody owns that is roaming about, they're not on their own personal property, it is the job of the field driver to deal with that livestock. Uh, in particular, the, the field driver is supposed to pick up that livestock, put it into a pound somewhere, um, when the owner comes forward, the field driver is supposed to make sure that any damage that was done by that livestock is then, uh, is restituted, as well as perhaps any fines for, you know, you let the thing out in the first place. So, basically, the field driver is the one that's supposed to go get the animals, put them somewhere, hold them, there's even things about, you know, you can take it back to your house, kind of stuff. Um, and my issue was, is these, this definition, in my opinion, conflicts directly with the ACO, um, and so, uh, I don't know, you know, where she ends, we begin, um, and what this board's intention is for the field driver position, uh, whether we're supposed to, uh, you know, take over this role, you know, as defined here, um, if we should do away with the, the, this.
It's a bylaw, so it's complicated.
I don't think it's a by, it's a Dayton bylaw. I don't think so. I could be wrong.
We need to, we'll research. I mean, if it isn't, then it's easy, but if it is a bylaw, then it has to go before the town.
Okay.
But I'm going to let Mrs. Ferry weigh in. I have a suggestion, um, but I'd like to hear from Ms. Ferry first, if that's okay?
Oh, absolutely.
You, you can stay up here, too, I mean, she won't bite.
She's probably had a rabies test.
So, any town that still has field driver in their bylaw, or they, they do that, their ACO, it's in their contract as a field driver, um, because way back when it was established, it was everybody knew, everybody's cows, and everybody was a farmer. Well, now, you put assessors who may not know anything about farming, chasing pigs or goats or cows, and we're going to have a problem. We're going to get people hurt, we could have, and nine times out of 10, I know where those animals belong, so I can knock on the door and say, "Come help me." Um, so, it's an antiquated law, bylaw or law, but as I said, I know the only one around here that still has field driver, as far as I know, is Rehoboth, and it's in his ACO contract, so.
No, thank you. Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Do you know if it's a bylaw or a policy?
It's, um, it just said an appointment that has just al- always been made, um, in my understanding.
Are all of the duties of the field driver included in the job of the AOC? I mean, the ACO, sorry.
We, yes, a lot of them are, uh, but we have, in my view, a really, um, a really timely opportunity right now. Um, um, one of the things, um, that, uh, we've been working on internally, uh, like, is act, is actually working on an updated job description for the, for the ACO, uh, that aligns with, um, uh, that aligns with a potential employment contract as well. So, like, we do, uh, like, uh, you know, uh, we're working, uh, like, with her on that, uh, as we speak, uh, to really, because there are a lot of things that we have always done, um, uh, you know, you know, we've always done them before, we've all, because we've always done them, and, but we're really looking at that, uh, you know, uh, to really assess how those things conform, uh, like, uh, you know, uh, with the statute, uh, with the roles and responsibilities of other town employees as well. So, we do hope to have updated, uh, updated job descriptions and other, like, related, uh, you know, proposals to the board, um, hopefully by the next meeting, um, on the 28th. So, like, I think we do, uh, you know, if the board would like to go in that direction, we do have a very timely opportunity to really clean up and streamline this process.
Great. Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
I didn't know, one of my, would we consider a rooster livestock? Because my rooster got loose, I mean, so I could have called Bill up, and he could have, you could have actually kept a rooster, because I didn't want that, want the rooster.
I don't know any assessor that's going to come out at 2:00 in the morning and chase cows. I really don't. I've done it many times, I have to see them do it.
And neither do I, for the, for the record, no.
So, regarding the role of the view fencer, you said it's in the statute.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't say the assessors are the.
Oh, no, no, this is, this has been, we, just, uh, something we've all done.
We decided years ago that.
It actually fits very well, so, so, I mean, you know, we're, we're working through a case right now, and it actually works very well, because we're the ones that have the maps and the, the.
So, you're not questioning that, it's really?
No, it's really the field driver. Um, the only thing, you know, like I said, the only issue I had with the fence viewer was the term, um, that it's, I think it should be one here.
And the $5 a day.
And $5 a day, that's right.
Is that a per diem rate, or?
It literally just says that, that, uh, fence viewers shall be paid $5 per day, that's all it says.
That would save the Commonwealth a lot of money, because otherwise, it would have to go to land court, and it would take forever, and it would be expensive, because lawyers would be involved. Mr. Karen, any questions?
I don't think we need a field driver anymore.
Okay.
So, that's, I'm just looking for clarification, you know, because if we're going to do this role, you know, do I do it, do I not do it?
No.
You know, because, and if I must say, what, what made me think of this is literally, like, days after we formed, I saw on Facebook that there were pigs roaming free, and I went, I think that's what I'm supposed to do, so, so we're just looking for what, um, what we need to do as a board.
Mrs. Gulat?
First of all, the, those two positions have nothing to do with assessors, per se. That's why when we had our first meeting, we had to have somebody from the Board of Selectmen come and organize the committee, and Mr. Pacheco did that. I have no problem with the animal control officer taking care of field driving. I think that there's a good opportunity here for, with that job description, and since this should have been a one-year appointment, which means it will come up again next year when annual appointments are done, I would say definitely. which means it will come up again next year, when annual appointments are done, I would say definitely appoint fence viewers, because historically speaking, we now have a case. And my understanding is that the last time there was a request for fence viewers was sometime during Mrs. Boragad's 20-some years of employment, and there was only one. So, and, and I feel confident that, fingers crossed, we're going to make progress and get that situation resolved. But I'm only speaking for myself, but again, I, I really feel that it's, it's archaic. It goes back to colonial times when there were no ACOs. And you need a qualified person to do it. And at my age, guys, I'm not chasing pigs, cows, or anything else, so I think it's worth.
That would be a blast.
You'd be surprised. So I, I think with what you're talking about, with, with the job description, I think it's an ideal time to do it.
So, Mr. Moore? Ms. Ferry, we'll sit down with Mr. Mullin. The only thing that I ask, especially when we have a question about the one-year versus two-year, three, that Mr. Pacheco, a town clerk, be a part of the discussion. For his input, he may, for various reasons, want to keep it as it is, or, you know.
But it's by statute, though, right, you said?
Right.
The one-year term?
The one-year term, yeah, as part of the Massachusetts law. And like I said, I don't think any of this is Dighton bylaws, I think this is all just Massachusetts law. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Gulat, thank you, Ms. Ferry, thank you. Next on the agenda is Beta Group, Pleasant Street at Muddy Cove Bridge Design Update. And Mr. Ferry, I also will probably ask you for your input.
So, yes, so Mr. Ferry brought an entourage with him this evening, consisting, consisting of Mark Gershman and Todd Wozeki from the Beta Group, who the town engaged last December, I believe, to kick off, really are planning in design efforts for a reconstructed Muddy Cove at Pleasant Street Bridge. So they've been working for the last nine or so months on this with us. And, and they're here to update the board and the public on, on our progress over these last few months and to discuss where we, where we are and how we go forward, so. So Mark Gershman and Todd Wozeki is waiting back for me.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you for having us tonight. Again, I'm Mark Gershman from Beta Group, and Todd Wozeki is setting up some boards, we went old school. So again, just to, we wanted to brief the board on the project and what we've been doing and where we are and moving forward. So as Mike said, Beta was hired, and it was actually January of this year, to do the preliminary design of the bridge, for the funds that were approved by town meeting in November of 2021. We had a kickoff meeting with the town in mid-February of this year. Since then, we've been working on the project's preliminary design, which included field surveys, wetland delineation, boreings, geotech and hydraulic reports, type study, and preliminary designs, which we are scheduled to submit to the town the end of September. Those plans will also be submitted to Mastod as a kind of initial cursory review by Mastod. We, Mike asked us to submit a scope and fee to move, advance the project through final design permitting and bidding, which you have tonight. That includes, like I said, the final design permitting, will be extensive on this project, which I'll talk about in a second. The project will be reviewed by Mastod under Chapter 85, Mass General Law, and then the bidding. So the site is in an environmentally sensitive area. Muddy Cove Brook is a navigal and perennial tidal stream, projects within 100-year FEMA coastal floodplain, a map fish run, the Taunton River, which is adjacent to the site, is a wild and scenic river. And the project is located within the Lower Taunton Area Historic District. So there's a number of permits that will be required, notice of intent, Chapter 91 license, Army Corps notification, Section 401, water quality, and then ENF. The permitting process moving forward will definitely drive the schedule of this project. Couple of things that were identified during the preliminary design that will be working with the town on and addressing. One is Muddy Cove Lane, the top of the plan view, is very close to the existing bridge, as you know. Coming out of Muddy Cove Lane, the sightlines are not great, so we're looking at addressing the sightlines coming out of that intersection by widening the bridge. And enough so that cars can see coming out of the end of Muddy Cove. There's a water and gas and overhead utilities that will be impacted by the project, they'll need to be relocated. We also understand there's a potential for the site to be contaminated. Part of final design will be taking some sediments from the river and some soils behind the abutments, and having those tested to see what contamination, if any, is out there. We'll be working with Demaxipus. We understand they're doing some sediment testing as well, or, no?
We're all done.
You're all done? So we'll be hopefully getting those results too, and see what they found. Schedule-wise, so again, we submitted the final scope and design fee for the board's review, and hopefully town meeting approval this November. Looking forward, again, permitting is going to drive the schedule. But we're anticipating that final design will occur in 2023. The winter of '23, '24 will advertise the project, award in the spring of '24. The site's complicated, but we're still expecting one major construction duration. So by the end of '24, it should be substantially complete. There'll be weather-dependent items that the contractor will have to come back for, probably in the spring of '25, final paving, landscaping, some weather-dependent items, punch list. The town did apply for a fiscal 23-community project grant through the Senator's office. We're waiting to hear, I think we made round one.
Yes.
Mike is more aware of that.
Preliminary, yes.
Preliminary, so waiting to hear. It's important to note that the town's support of this project from preliminary design, obviously, hopefully through final design, does put the project in a better light for receiving grant funds. A lot of the grants require preliminary design to be complete and the project shovel-ready within so many months. So again, the town's commitment moving this project forward is, puts it in a better light. With that, answer your questions.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
Questions, I reviewed everything.
Mr. Karen?
No. Unfortunately, we just, I just got it yesterday, and haven't looked at it that closely, and I'm sure I'll have some questions, but none right now.
I do have a few.
Sure.
One, regarding the steps.
Yes.
This is contingent on funding, so are there breaks on this project? I mean, I'm, I'm hearing that we're going to do this, we're going to do this, we're going to do this, and then I'm hearing we need 2.5 or 2.7 million. So at some point in time, we may have to put the brakes on this, and I want to see this happen, don't get me wrong.
Yep.
But I don't like to spend money we don't have, either.
No, your point is extremely well-taken, I think, and I don't want to speak, I don't want to speak for Mark, but the trajectory that he laid out was really based on, oh, you know, like us through the remainder of the process, having, having funding available, oh, you know, like, within that timeframe for the final design and permitting, and then funding in hand, our construction funding in hand, oh, you know, like following, following up to that. You know, there is no guarantee, oh, you know, on both, in terms of the final, the final design and permitting funding. You know, that is something based on, based on, based on the scope here, and the price, we will have to bring first to capital outlay in the FinCom, and then, and then also to, at the special town meeting. The, one of the things, and we've been, you know, the, the whole, the entire, we can, the entire replacement and construction funding for this past project, like is, like, is gen, like is generally estimated to be around 2.75, 2.8 million. So we already know, like, it would be almost impossible for the town to Dighton to fund that and to fund that alone. Over the past, over the past, over the past nine months, we have applied for, for that $2.75 million from two funding sources. One through Congressman Archon Klosers' office at the federal level, like which, in, in the, in the latest House Appropriations Bill, the $2.75 million in funding was included in that. It got out of the House Appropriations Committee. It now has to be voted by the full House of Representatives before we're moving over to the, over to the Senate. Also, the, the Community One Stop Grant Program, that is run, that is run by the state, by the first part of June, we applied, like, we applied for that grant funding as well. So we're doing everything we can to apply, like, for like any state and federal funding that we have available and access to. You know, like, and the further we go, like, into the, into the engineering, planning, and, and design, and the permitting process, the, oh, you know, the, the, oh, you're very much, like, our chances to be awarded construction funding for this project increase. So, so that is how we've been proceeding so far. And, I mean, I have, oh, you know, like, from the, oh, you know, from the other, from the other state and federal agencies we've been working with, we have, we have a letter, we have a letter of strong support from Mary Jo Perry, the Director of Region Five. Like, we, we have very strong support letters from Senator Pacheco, from Pat Hadad, from Serped, from the Taunton River watershed folks as well. So like, we're trying really to leverage all the resources we have, especially on the wild and scenic Taunton River, to make sure that this project is something that we don't have to fund and absorb on our own. So like, and everything we've been working on over the last year has been focused on that.
Thank you. I do have a question, when you were figuring this project, did you figure in, and what percentage did you use for inflation?
So we did an estimate at the type study, and we carried, I think we carried about a 30% contingency on that, do you remember? 20% contingency?
No, thank you.
Knowing that the project would be a couple of years out.
No, I appreciate that.
I, one thing that I do want to add, like, and it's more of an executive session issue, Mr. Chairman, we will, we do anticipate to have, to have a taking, a land taking involved in this process. So we will have to discuss that, oh, you know, first in executive session at some point. But, yeah, like, oh, yeah, but Beta, oh, you know, like, in the town have been doing our due diligence on that. And, oh, yeah, like, we are aware of that issue, but for obvious reasons, we really don't want to talk about that now, because.
Couple of questions for Mr. Ferry. Mr. Ferry, in the design and development of this project, has Mr. Gale been involved in it, the ADA?
That, that was a point.
Your plans, I hoping or assume, have been reviewed in our ADA compliant?
For the scope of the project, right now, we're not proposing any sidewalks, I don't believe.
Right, not at this time.
So it would just be the intersection, and there's no sidewalks on Muddy Cove Lane?
No.
So.
Would it be out of line of me to ask that Mr. Gale be a part of these discussions, or at least to review?
Absolutely.
To assure that we don't have to go back and revisit it? We, we had a project done in another section of town, a lot smaller, where now we've got to revisit it, because Mr. Gale wasn't involved in ADA, was.
No problem.
Kind of left out. Do you anticipate there being any disruption of traffic flow? Not on, well, on either street, if you could explain. Obviously, one street will be closed, correct?
Pleasant Street will be closed.
Pleasant Street.
During construction, yes. Did we work out the detour yet?
The detour plan is, is being worked on now, but the, the plan is for, during construction, Pleasant Street will be closed, and that will be detoured, so.
The site's just too tight to maintain traffic.
The state police, state will have to be notified, because 138 is a state highway?
Yep.
No, thank you. I don't have any further questions. Mr. Pacheco?
I have no questions.
Mr. Karen?
Well, I guess my concern is, if there's no sidewalks now, why would we be putting sidewalks in? Oh, I mean, you're not including sidewalks, but why would we include sidewalks if there's no other sidewalks on Pleasant Street?
We're not proposing.
That's what I said, I know you're not, but I guess my question is to the chairman.
Town preference.
So there, there would be no sidewalks on that bridge, Jerry, on that bridge at all?
No. Not at the moment.
The, the width would be there for, it's, Pleasant Street's on a, on a, for a decisionless, on four sidewalks, is not on a high priority right now, but it's still identified as Pleasant Street having a sidewalk in the future. And we just, that leave the structure and accompany down the east side.
We, we can, we looked at adding a sidewalk on the, the east side, where we're widening to improve the site distance with Muddy Cove Lane. The issue that we ran into was ADA compliant, that, because there is no sidewalk in either approach, so half of the sidewalk on the bridge would actually be a ramp, a handicap ramp. So we elected to not do that. I mean, it's, I think it's a 40-foot-long bridge, and 20 or 30 feet would be ramping for a handicap. For just a single sidewalk, it just didn't make sense to do that. I mean, the town, if the town wants us to incorporate, we can.
I think as we, as we advance through final design, we can, we can meet with Tom again, and, and Mr. Gale.
Okay, no, thank you.
Yeah, this, this is, we're, we're looking at our 25% design, so like Mark said, we want, the town wants to add that as something that definitely can be incorporated as we move forward.
I'd be curious to hear what Mr. Gale and Mr. Ferry have to say on that. So I like the idea, if you would meet with both of them and discuss it with them, and they'll come back with a recommendation to us. Thank you, unless we have any further questions?
No, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Bruce Thompson, on behalf of Zeneca.
Hi.
Good evening.
So, we start with a request for access. And this was triggered by us, as I think you know, we've done a ANRAD submission, looking at the wetlands mapping at the site. And this is really just updating the basis of the mapping. As part of that, we had to go look and say, oh, do we have all the access to all the abutting properties? One property owner of Muddy Cove Lane has never granted access for our investigations, that's fine, that's a separate discussion. Dighton owns a property right at the corner of Muddy Cove Lane and Pleasant Street, where we will eventually need access to conduct remediation and so forth. And we have a couple of monitoring wells that are in what's called a road box, like a flush mount, but they're in, in Pleasant Street. So what we realized is we've never formalized access to where those are, they got installed back in, I think, 2016, and somewhere even earlier. So that's what the purpose of that access agreement was. As part of that, I was up with my client from Zeneca, we met Mike over at the site, he said there's also some interest, so. I have a short, you know, update on what's happening at the site, but the access agreement was really just to try to formalize that, it goes with the wetlands package. I know that there were a couple of comments that came from Beta on the former substance of it, you know, as in, do we need to incorporate that we would collect water and dispose of it legally? We're already mandated to. We're already mandated to do that, the work we're doing i- at the site is under a RECA order with EPA to do all that, so we have the work plans that spell out all that stuff. If you wanted the access agreement with you, I'll put it in there, but we're already doing those things. Uh, if we ever need to abandon the wells, get done monitoring, you know, we, obviously we come out and take care of that. So, maybe there's a, so there's a two-part issue here, one is just are there questions about the access agreement and what we do there, and then secondly, I can talk to you about what's happening at the site.
Dad, did you, uh, did you want to begin with, just with like an overall update about what's going on at the site?
Maybe we will do that, then we can tail back to what we're doing. So, if you wanted to just hit the next slide. So, uh, obviously, you, this is your town, right? I, I live over in Connecticut, I've been involved with the site, I was involved for a couple of years, 2015 to 17, now I'm hired back by, by Zeneca, I'm their project manager for this. So, I'm managing the day-to-day work by a couple of different consultants. Um, so, the site was established back in the late 1800s, and then there was a furniture manufacturer, then Arnold Hoffman Chemical, and then ICI Americas, and in fact, Zeneca bought this, this parcel just in time to really shut it down. So, up there on the figure, uh, is a picture of what the site looked like in 1971, uh, you can see the dam, uh, and then, uh, the, what, there is, it's called the lagoon area, that's where water's discharged, and, and that's now been filled in. Uh, basically, they manufactured a wide variety of pigments, dyes, uh, they made a few other products along the way, some firefighting chemicals and so forth. So, diverse manufacturing over time. Can you go to the next slide, please? So, on the, kind of the remedial front, the, the site shut down in 1994, and the buildings were demolished between 95 and 99. They, they did a little bit of remediation at the time. Um, a- a- when we look at reusing or cleaning up a site like this, we're already kind of stuck, the site's really in the 100-year floodplain. Uh, obviously, at the time, the site was, was initially built in the 1800s, that wasn't a relevant issue, but that would substantially limit reuse. Uh, there's been a lot of investigation of different media, uh, soil, sediment, groundwater, there's been some biota sampling, you know, all since 1995. We have a variety of different kinds of contamination in soil, sediment, and groundwater. Uh, chlorinated benzines are the most significant, those were used, um, really in heat transfer and in some of the dye processing. There's arsenic lead and mercury from some of the dye-making, PCBs that were used in heat transfer, and PHs is, is like, um, like, I think, like asphalt, polyaromatic hydrocarbons. So, we have these various things we've been sampling. I mentioned, the work we're doing here is under a 2004 administrative order between Zeneca and EPA to conduct what's called a RECA facilities investigation, and then a corrective measure study. Uh, in English, that means figure out the nature and extent of the contamination, and evaluate ways to remediate it, and look at the costs, and then that process goes up through EPA review. Can you go to the next one? Whoop, that didn't...
Yeah.
It's okay, you just, uh, just go down, there's the, the next figure should work, that's just, uh, what this looks like. So, that's the floodplain, so in that, the blue, the, the site is, is all the way, basically within the blue, which is the 100-year floodplain, and then out to the, kind of the brown or the orange, that's the 500-year floodplain, so basically, anything we tried to build there, we would have to offset, you know, foot, cubic yard by cubic yard for flood storage. Can you go to the next one, please? So, this investigation process that I'm managing, uh, this is a large site, there's a lot of different kinds of impacted media, there's been a lot of work over the years. Part of my job is trying to kind of bring, bring it all together and, and make progress with EPA. Uh, we finished the, kind of the studies of all the nature and extent of the contamination in 2016. Since then, we, we, we've been working on what's called a risk assessments, and this looks at the contamination, and we look at risks to human health, whether it's through ingestion of soil, water, breathing air, whatever, we need all the pathways. We also have to look at ecological risk, and right now, uh, the last submittal we put into EPA, they said, we think you need to dive deeper in a couple of parts of the site, so do some further sampling, look at some other issues, and we're trying to see if areas of the site, if the sediment is posing a risk to biota, um, and then that would trigger cleanup. So, that's where we are right now. The next phase after we're done would be calculating, like, cleanup levels, like, for soil, we have to hit X number for arsenic. This isn't just made up, it comes out of the mass guidance, and we go through the process. We go from there to then a corrective measure study, that's lining up everything we have to do at the site. So, in a couple of years, we'll start doing, uh, the excavation kind of cleanup, and the site will have a period of long-term O&M. Can you go to the next figure? So, uh, actually, one more, it's, but it'll be a little bit easier to, to show, so can you zoom in on the, on the left? So, this is what the aerial view of what the site looks like right now, and, uh, so all the buildings are demolished, you can see the foundations. At this point, a lot of the foundation area is now classified as wetlands. So, we've got wetlands plants like phragmides growing up through broken pavement, so that's one of the reasons we've come in for the, the ANRAD process. I mentioned we have a variety of kinds of metals and PCBs, mostly in soils, those are going to get, uh, dug up and, and removed for off-site disposal, that, that's kind of the end stage. There's a, kind of a bright blue dot, um, yeah, you can see it right above the yellow lines. That's an area where, uh, there was chloro benzene stored in tanks that leaked, and so we have an area of this chlorinated benzene substance, so, uh, one, 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 four dicloro benzene is like mothballs, and, uh, things that you see in urinal cakes, so that kind of odorant scent, so we have that stuff as a liquid in the ground. So, we have an area of soil that's going to have to get treated, and some of this fluid sank down, and it's down in the bedrock, so it's a groundwater contaminant. So, we were lining up to look at how to remediate those areas. The, the area that we call the encapsulated lagoon, the AOC1, that yellow outline, it used to be a lagoon, it got filled in in the 1970s, um, and that area has, so now that, when you drive by, that's all phragmides, and, and we know it has overflowed, we've tried to work on the drainage there. That area will, will likely have some remediation, and, uh, Muddy Cove itself is, the sediment has PHs, PCBs, arsenic, mercury, we expect that a lot of the sediment is also going to get removed at some point. So, uh, connecting into your bridge work, uh, and something I did mention in the access agreement, uh, Mike, you may be aware that you're doing it, so we have existing sediment data in Muddy Cove, and we even have some data right out on the outside in the Taunton River, um, that we can share, and we actually just did kind of a time series study, and we think it's still useful, would probably support, uh, and there are Beta's design work, just to know that there's some impacts. So, uh, we're happy to, you know, share what we already have with what you're trying to work on. Long-term, and can you go, uh, one more? So, my access agreement to you is really addressing groundwater contamination, and, um, you know, not going to try to explain hydrogeology, but we have chlorinated benzines down in the bedrock, and then the way the groundwater is moving, it's coming up from bedrock and eventually discharging to the Taunton River. So, groundwater contamination goes from left to right, from where the facility is, and eventually the groundwater discharges to the Taunton River. We see significant attenuation along the flow path, uh, and that's due to some biodegradation that's already occurring in the groundwater, so there will be a combination of some treatment on-site and monitoring, uh, of, of the contamination that's moving off-site as it's degrading. So, you can see on the, on the far right side, some of the well clusters, so these are a pipe in the ground with slots in it where you can sample groundwater at various depths below the ground surface. So, we have some, like I said, in a road box right there on Pleasant Street, we've got some down, uh, and, and those are going to need to be monitored, I, I would say, you know, for the foreseeable future, for some time. Uh, we'll be responsible for keeping them locked up and so forth, but that's, that's our need, that's our immediate need. In the future, as we go through the design process, we've got all the same kind of permitting hurdles. Before we go dig out sediment out of Muddy Cove, we're going to have all the same cor of engineers process, we'll be in front of you and your wetlands commission, so there'll be ad- adequate time for that negotiation on access and what we need to do. Right now, we're, I would say, we're trying to check the box for the ANRAD submission and make sure we're on the books as having access from the town. I'll pause there.
Any questions?
My concern is, is that you're on the property almost 30 years, and now we're starting to deal with the situation. Those chemicals were in the grounds before you even purchased, uh, the property. I'm just concerned that, how long is this going to take? It's obviously, we've got some pretty nasty chemicals and stuff in, in the soil, and the sooner the better, and we can't do anything, we can't have a business come in there or anything like that because it's contaminated.
Yeah, so, so Zeneca is the responsible party, they bought the company, they own the liability, we're, as I said, it, this is, um, a long and complicated process, and so Zeneca's committed to doing the right cleanup. Um, I, I, I've talked with the client, the, the manager, you know, Chuck Almond Dorf, we've, he's, we've donated some other property, I know, to the town and stuff for, we just don't see, it's tough to read, we could see, like, passive solar, something you put up, like, on Jersey barriers that's out of the floodplain, it's just a tough, it's a tough resale to do something other than, in an open space would be possible. Um, I think we're a few years out of working through this process with EPA before we're doing active remediation, and at that point, you know, we'll, like I said, I think we're going to be back in front of you. Um, at this point, we, you know, one of the things we do, and so I've been managing environmental sites like this for 31 years, so if there was a direct risk where we saw there's a route of exposure, there's a current pathway, that's the sort of thing that we're right on top of. We have a benefit here, like there would be a Pleasant Street, their own city water. If we saw somebody's on well water as an impact, that's the kind of thing that we have to respond to immediately, just, you know, professional, but it's the right thing to do. We don't have that scenario, we have a piece of property that has impacts for sure, but there's, the only concern we would have would really be, at this point, would be a trespassing.
Another question is on the, the ass, access that you want, that's on town property?
Yeah.
You're saying, okay, it's not private property?
Right, 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 we have to deal with private property separately, but it's, it's really that corner right where your bridge designed, and right at the corner of Pleasant and Muddy Cove Lane, there's a little finger of land that runs up Muddy Cove Lane, um, and I was just trying to be inclusive, right, that we have the right things, right paperwork there.
True, thank you. I have no other questions.
Mr. Karen, any questions?
I know you're here for access, but how long do you see this before you start? A couple of years, you said?
Before we start, like, actual remediation?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be a couple of years.
And how long do you think it'll take to complete it?
Uh, so, when, when we plan something like this, this is a non-trivial site, this is not the biggest or worst, but this is, this is not a ground ball, it's not like doing a gas station tank yank. Um, what's going to happen is typically, the work will proceed from upstream to downstream, so we would work up on the plant site itself, and then come down, and the last area we would do would be actually Muddy Cove, and that's so you don't recontaminate something that, you know, you've, you've already cleaned up. So, the process will probably be five, six years of work as we move our way down, and we'll have the exact same hurdles, um, the level of permitting difficulty as we get down to actually, say, digging up sediment in Muddy Cove, that'll be the hardest, longest permitting process to go through. So, like, like Beta, we're on the same track of looking at what those hurdles are and making the arrangements for it.
Right. Uh, no other questions, thank you.
No, thank you. Mr. Thompson, first of all, I want to thank you, I've noticed that work has begun on Main Street in cleaning up right across from the fire station, and mowing and...
Yep.
The area's looking much better, thank you.
We've got, um, I, I guess, we did a sidewalk with a client, and we're also, you know, we have the Elm Street landfill, so we've got some trees up there, we're actually working with the property owner to get those taken care of, and, uh, the client and I looked and said, you know, we've got a lot of stuff going up through fences, so just trying to do some housekeeping and cleaning is on our long-range plan now.
Now, we speak about fences, Pleasant Street...
Yep.
That fence is on your...
So, we, we've, we've talked about it, we, we've got a quote on it, I have a conference call coming up, I think it's next week with a former plan owner, what, the last question my client had is, who built it? And we don't know, and we don't have it in our memory. It looks like the fence is probably two-thirds on Zeneca property, and the lower third, near Muddy Cove Bridge, is on town property, but if somebody in town knew when it appeared, it might be helpful if there's any corporate memory.
Mr. Ferry, no, before you?
You, you already checked with Dick Spat.
That, that's who I've got, I've got a call set up with him to talk about it, and that's, it's on my agenda, so we'll have an answer back probably by the end of the month on, and, but, kind of, we've, we've talked about being able to come out and change out the wood and paint it, that sort of thing.
Awesome, thank you. Um, the only question I have, you're, you're currently going before conservation, is that correct?
Yes.
And, um, even, although it doesn't say anything in this agreement, it, it, it talks about your people, Domaxis, um...
So, you've...
Nothing in this...
You've got a pyramid of folks working for Zeneca, right? So, I'm at the top of it as the project manager.
Okay.
So, Domaximus, we are a professional project management company, we manage big, super fun sites and environmental sites, that's our specialty. We also have GeoSynTech consultants who's been doing the investigation work, they're doing the risk assessment, they would do groundwater sampling, and then they hired LEC, who did the ANRAD submission for wetlands, because we're, these are kind of areas of expertise, right? So, but the ANRAD process and the wetlands is a, that's what triggered us to me to come in and say, I need to check the box on access, and kind of open up the door and start talking to you all about what's coming up.
And in your working relationship with conservation, uh, the conservation agent has full access to these properties?
Yeah, uh, I, I know we just did a sidewalk, but not your side, different side of Beta, and, uh, I think we're moving like six of the flags on the wetlands, and then, and then updating the drawings as part of the submission process for that, yeah.
Thank you. Um, just so the board will be aware, um, Beta Group, who has been working with them, recommend approval of this, uh, request, just for the record, okay? Uh, are there any further questions?
I have none.
Mr. Karen? I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed access agreement to Pleasant Street and Water Street and parcels at zero Muddy Cove Lane and zero Pleasant Street, Dayton, Massachusetts.
I so move second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hollis and I.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda, uh, and, thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for waiting patiently, uh, Paul Reynolds, treasure collector, review, discuss, and act on the land use committee recommendation of auction items. Um, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, sir, good evening, everybody, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, I am here tonight regarding a list of parcels which have been prepared for sale at auction, if the worth of selecting is solvable. Uh, now, regarding these parcels, these are some town-owned, uh, pieces of land which have gone through land court, and the right of redemption has been foreclosed. Uh, we've got some preliminary conversations taking place with an auctioneer. Uh, now, there are some process pieces regarding the auction that will be taking place in an ongoing conversation, that will remain taking place between the auctioneer, the building commissioner, myself, the land use committee, and the county administrator. I spoke with Building Commissioner Aguirre this morning, who's graciously volunteered his expertise as the point of primary interface with the auctioneer in terms of specifically including any language or conditions in the auction from a building department perspective. And before things finalize, if so approved this evening, my office will, um, engage with Capola and Capola, who we have traditionally used for tax title and land court issues to ensure compliance with all applicable laws and regulations as we move forward to auction. Just to reiterate, though, these, these are town-owned parcels which have, uh, gone through land court and have foreclosed the right of redemption. And, uh, prior to continuing with the language of the request, um, with your permission, I would request to read the addresses and parcel IDs into the record, if that's okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, first is zero Smith Street, parcel ID 010 dot zero hyphen 140 hyphen 0000 dot zero. Zero Horton Street, 010 dot zero dash 0080 dash... Zero Horton Street, zero one zero dot zero dash zero zero eight zero dash zero 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 dot zero. Zero Oak Street, zero zero seven dot zero hyphen zero zero one nine hyphen zero 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 two point zero. Zero Winthrop Street, zero zero one point zero hyphen zero zero two zero hyphen zero 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 one point zero. Zero Chestnut Street, zero zero one point zero hyphen zero zero four zero dash zero 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 two dot zero. Zero Purchase Street, zero one four dot zero dash zero 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 seven dash zero 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 two dot zero. Zero Smith Street, zero one five dot zero dash zero zero one five dash zero 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 one point zero. And I am grateful that the camera is pointed at my face and you cannot see me counting the zeros on my fingers as I go. And so, that said, what we're requesting this evening is approval to move forward with the auction process. This will allow us to engage with the auctioneer and to undertake any of the necessary background work, which we'll need to do to get across the finish line. So in summation of the specific language of the request that we are receiving this evening, I'd say that we are looking for tonight is to see if the Board of Selectmen will so authorize and give approval to the town treasurer acting in the appointed capacity as tax possession custodian to sell at public auction the aforementioned list of seven parcels which have been approved by the land use committee for disposal at auction.
Are we able to vote on all of these in one, or do we have to take each one separately?
No, you can do all in one based on the proposed motion that the treasurer just recommended, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Reynolds, I want to thank you for excellent presentation this evening. With that being said, are there any questions?
Yes, Mr. Reynolds, could you give us on the different plots that we have in front of us, the lot numbers for each? For example, Zero Smith, I don't know which lot we're talking about.
Absolutely. Let me one moment, I've got a hard copy.
One of the things, I can actually, Treasurer Reynolds, if it's easier, I think when the PDF packet was made, some of the, some of the highlights, like, actually were lost, and I went through and I can, I can provide the board with my packet that like I went through and actually re, like I re-nominated all the parcels.
Perfect, yes, thank you very much, sorry, I should have foreseen that, victim of the copy machine.
So do we know for Zero Smith, which is apparently Lot 140, do we know how much furniture there is?
I do not have notes on that, unfortunately.
Yeah, my concern is that we're gonna be putting to auction some possible lots that could be future houses, and we're already trying to have as many houses in Dayton, so that would be my concern. It looks like there's a lot of furniture, I don't know exactly how much it is, but did you see this? Mr. Reynolds, Chairman, for example, this is, this is the lot. So this is Smith Street, so there's a lot of furniture. Horton Street, I don't know what the furniture is, but it looks like there's similar, Mr. Cameron was on the ZBA, so we're familiar with these.
Yeah.
With these lots. So I don't know how much furniture is for these other lots, buildable lots apparently, that have either less furniture, so I'm assuming that this is buildable.
If they're not buildable, I can't see them selling at auction unless it's in a butter.
Yes. All right, I agree, that's why I was hoping that these lots were...
Small.
Small, and it looks like the next one, my last, it's got furniture too, so that would be my concern that we're auctioning off a lot of lots that might bring us some good revenue, to be quite honest.
Right.
I was curious, has this been reviewed by Open Space? Committee?
This has been, this specific list of parcels, to my knowledge, has been working its way through the land committee for well beyond my tenure, I would estimate probably at least a year or so, so to be honest, I don't know if it's made that specific stop on its journey, so to speak, so I unfortunately have not, have not been in office long enough to be able to speak to that, I apologize.
Mr. Reynolds, will there be additional lots, or is this the final count, these seven?
Yes, this seven is the final count.
Thank you.
Paul, is there any idea what this will bring in for revenue? Do you have an estimate?
No, that's a great question. Now, one of the things that is going to be taking place in the ongoing, in the ongoing discussion, if we are to gain approval to move forward tonight, is there may be some procurement which will take place based on chapter thirty B. If the total value of the parcels is determined to be over thirty-five thousand dollars using standards that are generally regarded by the appraising profession as valid, we do not know exactly what that is going to entail at this stage yet, whether there's gonna be an automated valuation model that can be provided by the auctioneer, or if we are going to, you know, have comps prepared. At this point, we haven't gotten to that yet, but there is a potential procurement that could be kicked off based on the potential value of them, if they exceed thirty-five thousand dollars in aggregate. But at this time, we don't, we don't currently, it's one of those things that as we get a little deeper into the process, we'll be able to be given a firmer idea of what the valuation is going to be, but at this time, we didn't want to, we don't want to put the cart before the horse, so to speak, and begin to do those if we were going to have the ability to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullin?
Yes, sir.
Is it appropriate to ask Mr. Cavalo, he is a member of the Open Space Committee?
He is, I believe I could be wrong, Mr. Cavalo is a member of the Planning Board in the Trails Committee?
Just Trails, okay, not Open Space.
Hey, Mr. Cavalo, are you a member of Open Space? I could be wrong.
No, I'm not, no.
I was just curious if they had weighed in, I was just curious if they had weighed in on this prior to coming before us.
I can, I can tell you from the perspective of being on the Trails Committee, I never seen these parcels before, so I know it's a bit late to be talking about it, but just texting Mr. Ferry as, you know, we've never seen these, and doesn't sound like anybody from Open Space has either. Unfortunately, it doesn't sound like that he's made the room.
Mr. Cavalo, thank you. Mrs. Gulab?
Each in history time.
It's okay.
Prior to becoming elected the first time to the Board of Selectmen, I was on the Finance Committee, and we were approached by the Board of Selectmen to make a recommendation and give approval on a list of land that's town-owned and taken by tax title. The Finance Committee decided, we can't make a recommendation because we don't know anything about the land. So I went to the Selectmen's meeting and said, the position of the Finance Committee is, we don't know what it is you're trying to sell other than town-owned land. Therefore, the suggestion is, create a town-owned land committee which is involved into this title. Every piece of property has to be classified, set up classifications, open space, wetlands, mother nature, you're never gonna touch it, conservation land, industrial development, suitable for home building, every piece must have a classification, so that when it comes before the Board to determine, do we want to sell it, how's it classified? Because at the time, I remember somebody saying, well, for example, swamps are worthless. I said, no, they're not, that's mother nature land, you've got to preserve that kind of land. So it might be helpful, I hope they still have classifications, if on each of those parcels, they could tell you how they have been classified since the original Board was set up. If the classification has changed, one of the strategic things we asked them to do is, if it's buildable land and it abuts any town land, we should set it aside because we may have to build more schools in the future. So even if it's landlocked, if it abuts town land, it's, you should consider it and hold it. So that's what the Board of Selectmen did back prior to two thousand and seven. So if the original committee, the chairman, was David Neely from Pleasant Street, because once they submitted the list and all the classifications, by then I was on the Board, and he thought, Mr. Neely thought that was the end of his work, and I said to him, he said, so we're done. I said, no, you're not, Mr. Neely, we would like you to remain on the committee, and each year, give us an update, add new land that may have been taken by tax title, or review the list and see if you want to change any of the classifications. But I don't know if that classification system got changed when the title of that committee got changed, but that was what helped the Board of Selectmen determine whether or not they should move ahead and sell it.
No, thank you very much. You're welcome. Mr. Reynolds, has Land Use Committee weighed in on this?
Yes, this has, the Land Use Committee did recommend to sell these properties, as well, if this helps to clarify anything or ameliorate any additional concerns about classification or anything else that may have been done prior. Just to elaborate a bit, the annual town meeting contained a warrant article eight, which read, you see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to sell at public auction and further allow the Board of Selectmen to sell through the sealed bid process according to MGL chapter thirty B, section sixteen, all properties which the town has legally acquired by tax title or take any action relative thereto. So that was what prompted tonight's approval. The town also does have the Office of Tax Possession Custodian, which is under chapter sixty, section seventy-seven B, which reads that the mayor or any city, the Selectmen of any town which holds property acquired by foreclosure of tax titles required under section eighty may appoint a custodian who shall have the care, custody, management, and control of all property heretofore or hereafter so acquired by said city or town. The custodian shall serve during the pleasure of the mayor or selectman and shall receive as his compensation if any is some fixed by the mayor or by the selectman. The custodian acting on behalf of the city or town may, notwithstanding any provision of law, ordinance, or bylaw inconsistent here with, sell at public auction any such property first sending a notice thereof as herein provided to the owner of record immediately prior to the acquisition by the city or town of the title to such property. So in the creation of the Office of the Tax Possession Custodian, which I was appointed to, in order to be consistent with warrant article eight, which does reiterate that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen must act in, what sounds to me like conjunction to move forward with that, from my understanding of section seventy-seven B and the rules of the tax possession custodian, that should, to my understanding, ameliorate any of the other concerns about things that may have been done in the past, so long as the Board tonight were to be supportive of moving forward, if that helps to clarify or ameliorate any concerns.
No, that says it quite clearly. Any further questions, Mr. Karen, Mr. Pacico?
Yes, regarding what Mrs. Gulab said, one of them on the class, Zero Chestnut, says residential, all the others say exempt.
Right.
That would mean exempt on the class.
That is not the classification I would set up, because I'm the one who set up the classification. The purpose of the classification was not to interfere with any of the laws, the custodian of the property, the treasurer, the tax collector, or the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen was happy when I presented this to them, because they were looking for guidance. Well, once this work was done, anyone could look at it, including the Finance Committee, and say, oh, that's what this land is, so do we, it's been classified this way, now it's on the list to sell. We as the Board of Selectmen, do we want to, do we want to sell that? Okay? It was, the work that was done was meant to provide assistance to the Board of Selectmen and anyone else trying to determine, is this a piece of land we really want to sell? Okay? So again, I'm sure if anyone looks back, there were records that indicate how it started. Now, there may have been classification changes, I don't know, but I know when I was on the Board of Selectmen the first time, we used the guidelines that had been determined. And then when the treasurer said, you know, this is the list, the committee would say, here's a list of what we're suggesting or recommending, it's up to you whether or not you want to sell it, here's how it's classified. And then we would work with the town treasurer, tax collector, and determine, definitely want to sell this. It was rare that a piece of property was taken off the list, but again, the committee was only advisory to help the Board understand the potential future use or holding of the property.
No, thank you. So, Mr. Reynolds, Land Use Committee has reviewed this, that is correct?
Aye, yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hi, this is Jeff Cavalo, can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Jeff Cavalo, twenty-one twenty-four times away. I just want to respond to Mr. Reynolds, if I could. Just, Mr. Reynolds, thank you for bringing up the article from the town, the annual town meeting warrant, but I mean, as I understand it, it says that you can do it, it doesn't necessarily say that you should do it, and that's really, I think that's what everybody's asking here, is I, in my personal opinion, it doesn't seem like the due diligence has really been done on whether or not we really want to sell these. This is a list of parcels that can be sold, but it seems like there's a lot of other groups within the town that may not have had a chance to review these sufficiently, and it sounds like what Mrs. Gulab mentioned in the past, there was a little more, there was a lot more due diligence done to assure that selling limits the right to do, whether or not you can do it, is really just, in my opinion, that step was missed, so that's it. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cavalo, thank you. Mr. Mullin?
So one of the things I just, I just want to clarify here, like I, like I'm not like a member of the, of the Land Use Committee, but I, but I do understand, especially over the last year, they have, as a committee, have been meaning to do and review, you know, the entire inventory of our town-owned, of our town-owned parcels, the parcels that have been taken by, the parcels that have been taken by tax title as well, and in what you see, you know, from the seven recommendations that the Land Use Committee has brought forward through the treasurer tonight, you know, like it's really the, you know, the result of the due diligence that really has been done. I do know there is, there's another parcel, I'm actually on Tremont Street, there's a town-owned tax, tax title taken pass on, like on Tremont Street, which is a fairly big parcel, but the, but the Land Use Committee deliberately did not recommend it, based on the input and the feedback, actually like in this, like in this matter, Highway Superintendent Ferry is a member of the Land Use Committee as well, and he had, like in relative to the delocation of that parcel which is located across from the transfer station, you know, there was a lot of open space and drainage issues, like in the area relative to that parcel, which based on that, the Land Use Committee, you know, based on, it sounds like the, you know, the sequencing or the matrix, you know, that the committee had, you know, they decided to hold it, you know, like and not actually recommend it for to auction. So again, like I'm not like a member, I'm not a member of the committee, but from what I do understand, they do have a matrix, they do have a ranking where they do consider, like entertain like all the different, like all the different really pieces that make each parcel and property work or not work, like whether it does abut another all town-owned property, if there are resources areas, if there are resource areas and so forth. So I just, like I just wanted to add, I just wanted to add that for context, I also am aware that the Land Use, that the Land Use, that the Land Use Committee has also historically prioritized other, you know, like other parcels for Trails and the Trails Network as well. Like I know this, like I know this especially relating to the area out behind, like out behind Pine Street, and in the article... And, um, in the article that was, um, accepted, uh, the article that was actually approved at town meeting to accept the land off of Sylvia Way, because that abuts, that abuts our other tax, other tax title land that we have in our possession that we've held, uh, like, and then the, the land on Sylvia Way is actually aligning with that to create a much, oh, yeah, like a much broader open space and trails resource area as well. Uh, so like, again, like, I'm not a member of the committee, but from what, uh, you know, like, I have heard about their deliberations, it does sound like, oh, you know, the matrix in the process that Ms. Gulat described, oh, you know, like, is act, oh, you know, like, is, oh, you know, uh, like, is actually really directing the committee's work still. So I just wanted to provide that.
Mr. Reynolds, my question to you has no indication of how I'm going to be voting. It's more for general knowledge for Mr. Carron and Mr. Pacheco. If we were to table this for two weeks, would that create a major problem for you?
A major problem, no, I would not say so.
It wouldn't be a problem if you needed to come back in two weeks, the 28th?
No, I would not say so. These, um, you know, of, of course.
Well, I don't know how, how we're going to vote. I mean, I can't speak for Mr. Carron and Mr. Pacheco, but I just wanted to, to ask that question so as we go through the, the decision-making process, that they would have that, um, to ponder over.
Yes, no, um, as I, no, this, this has been going on for quite some time, and I don't think that, that two weeks is going to, uh, is going to cause any harm. Uh, just for a little bit of perspective, I am looking back, uh, on the town website, um, at some of the historical Land Use Committee meeting minutes. And this, um, this has been an ongoing discussion that looks like it's been going back since, looks like it is October 14th, 2020, uh, is the date that I'm looking at the meeting for now. So there has been a substantial amount of time that these properties have been deliberated. And, um, but that, that said, I don't, I don't think that two more weeks would necessarily be the, uh, the straw to break the camel's back.
Okay, no, thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
I would refer to table, so we can get the classifications of the different lots that are coming up for auction.
Mr. Carron?
I would agree. I'd like to know more about the size of the lots and, um, again, whether it butts town land that we already own, like Mrs. Gulat said, uh, could be a benefit's cause in the future.
Mr. Smith, is he, is he the chairman of Land Use?
Um, Jimmy Agia is actually the current chairman, I believe. Is that correct, Trezorinos?
Could we ask Mr. Agia?
To attend?
Well, based on, I think, I know how the vote's going to go. I will entertain a motion on this matter.
I'll make a motion to table, uh, this matter, Land Use Committee's recommendation to auction to the next meeting.
Motion's been made. Second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Carron?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is aye. Mr. Mullin? Mr. Reynolds? We will put it on the agenda for the next meeting, the 28th, and please, if Mr. Agia could also be present?
He will be invited, for sure.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is public input. Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds.
The next item is the proclamation.
Oh, I'm sorry, the proclamation, sorry, sorry, sorry. Mrs. Gail, I, uh, Gales, I'm sorry, are you here in regards to the proclamation?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, we have before us this evening, a proclamation from the President of the United States. Whereas September 17th, 2022 marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week. And now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Dyton that the week of September 17th through the 23rd be Constitution Week. And urge all the citizens to study the Constitution and to reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. So declared Leonard E. Hull, Junior Chairman, Peter D. Carron Clark, Kenneth J. Pacheco, Member. I will entertain a motion to enter this proclamation into the record.
I so move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Carron?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. And I know Dyton is very pro government, pro country, pro Constitution. And I know, and I would hope that in classrooms in Dyton and in Rehoboth, that time is spent this week going over what the Constitution means. And means not only for the individual, but for the unity of this nation. Thank you. With that being said, we will now entertain public input. I would like to just review a couple of rules before we begin public input. One, that any matter that pertains to business being brought forth by a public employee, I would recommend, or ask that they bring it to Mr. Mullin's attention to have it placed on the agenda. Regarding public input by non-employees of the town, that discussion be limited to five minutes and that the chairman reserves the right to stop discussion, should it be in violation of personnel rights or be profane. With that being said, Mr. Marvel, you had your hand up?
Yes, I do, and I, it's such a podium.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dyton. Uh, my name's David Marvel, live on 102 Forest Street. And I'm the co-chair of the Dyton Lions Arts Festival that's happening November 6th, Sunday. And so what I've been looking for is talent of people basically playing a guitar or if they like to sing. We're doing an acoustic set at Arutio's Farm. Uh, it's been a trying year for us because we've been out for two years with COVID, so we're falling in and back on our feet. Everything's looking good for us, the, the Arts Festival that's coming up. Uh, it's been a lot of work, a lot of meetings. And, um, so if you have an interest, like maybe singing for about five or 10 minutes with a guitar, please contact me. Can I see my email? Is that okay?
That's good with you?
Yes, sure. Okay, uh, my email address is D Marvel, that's M-A-R-V, like in Victor, I-L-L, at hotmail.com. Uh, that doesn't work for you to let someone at the town know and they'll contact me because I'm on the cable committee. So once again, we're looking for volunteers that like, you know, sing or play guitar in our upcoming event. Thank you.
Mr. Marvel, thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Yes, Mr. Fred.
I received a text this morning from Lisa that said I should be here at 7:30 to discuss the possibility of me being appointed to the, it's not a verbal vote, but a line.
Well, I don't see that on the agenda until, under New Business, later on in the meeting. I don't know where Lisa got that information, um, but according to the agenda we have before us, uh, your request to be appointed is much later in the meeting.
I don't get worried about it, I guess we should come up for a line.
I don't know where Lisa got that information. On the agenda we have this evening, 7:15 PM was the treasurer collector. Your appointment is on the meeting for much later, under New Business.
Today.
Today.
Okay.
Okay.
I can certainly wait for New Business.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mrs. Gulat.
Uh, I just wanted to mention that, um, the Aggie School is going to have its fall open house on Saturday and Sunday, October 22 and 23. There will be no Friday evening events like they've had in the past, but my understanding is, uh, the entire campus will be open and the animal barns and the new cow barn and everything else will be open for inspection. So I'm just, I just want to get the word out so people can think about that, especially if they've got students in school that may be aspiring to attend.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Gulat, I much appreciate it. And, and a follow-up on that, uh, just so Mr. Carron, Mr. Pacheco know, um, Mr. Mullin has reached out to the Bristol County Agricultural School to make sure that the Board of Selectmen in the Town of Dyton, uh, receives notification of upcoming events. I know, I, being a school, uh, president, very much involved in schools, that I would really like to know when, and I will attend these, so I look forward to the open house. Bristol Aggie is outstanding school, and they have a beautiful campus. It's also been brought to my attention, uh, that Chronicle is doing a story on that area on the bridge, Bristol Aggie. So it has caught the attention of many people.
Are they going to interview Ms. Gulat?
Excuse me?
Are they going to interview Ms. Gulat on the bridge?
Well, there were, Channel 5 film crew was out there the other day. So we're looking forward to seeing it. Uh, is there any other public input? Yes, Mr. Galucci? You just say your name and address for the record.
Tom Galucci, 2086 Palmer Street. Um, in light of Constitution Week, you know that the Dyton Republican Town Committee has lots of copies of the Constitution, which we love to hand out to government officials such as yourselves, because I think people need to be reminded that the Constitution is like a chain on a vicious dog, and it keeps that government from becoming overly powerful. I find it ironic that a president who uses federal law enforcement to jail his political enemies is honoring the Constitution this week. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Next announcements?
Yeah, we just asked Ms. Brady to put that on the announcements about Bristol Aggie the next couple of meetings.
Thank you.
Announcements, the Council on Aging Primetime Supportive, the Day Program is accepting new clients. For more information, please contact Program Manager Trista Tate at 508-669-6272 or email The Town Dyton Food Bank Distribution will be held next on September 17th, 2022, located at the Town Hall, 979 Seven Cent Avenue, Lower Level. On Sunday, September 18th, 2022, the Dyton Historical Society, for the record, I am a member and officer of the Dyton Historical Society, will host an afternoon tea with Anne Barrett, who will discuss life aboard a whaling ship in 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the Friendship Hall at 2056 Elm Street. Tickets at $10 each, ages eight and up, and can be purchased on their Facebook page or by calling 508-669-6888. The Dyton Fire Department announces their 24th Annual MDA Fill-the-Boot Drive for September 24th and 25th. They will be at the intersection of Center Street and Route 138 between the hours of 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM. All precautions, all precautions will be taken to assure everyone's safety. On Saturday, October 29th, 2022, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the Drug Enforcement Administration, DEA, will coordinate with the Dyton Police Department for a one-day collaborative prescription-drug take-back initiative event to remove potentially dangerous controlled substances, substances from homes. And I have a list of the committee vacancies. Cable Television Committee needs three members. Commission on Disability needs three members. Conservation Commission needs one member. Historical Commission needs one member. Open Space Committee needs three members, and the Salad Waste Committee needs one member. That's it.
I, I would like to add one more to the announcements. I don't see it included. Uh, it was mentioned today at the Botman Head Meeting, that the Dyton Police Department will be playing, I believe it's Berkeley.
No, the Dyton Police versus Dyton Fire.
Fire will be.
It's all hometown talent.
Yes, uh, this Saturday from?
One, uh, 1:00 at the Lopes, uh, at the Lopes Complex, everything, all the fun will be kicking off from there.
Yes, sure.
Supple or baseball?
Supple. Yes, it should be a really good game, and it certainly helps to build morale in the town. So I strongly encourage as many people who can get there to come on over and root on their, their favorite side. It should be interesting. Next, Town Administrator's Report.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just, um, on the agenda, I have one thing, but I actually have, uh, three things I want to, uh, quickly mention. Uh, number one, um, I, I, everyone, I'm in, I'm at Town Hall, I, I had old Town Hall, um, for the last week especially, um, including our administrative assistant, uh, I'm including our administrative assistant, Ms. Set Cohen, um, has been laser-focused on, uh, the, uh, the migration and the rollout, uh, like of our new website. Um, I also want to, would thank ADA Coordinator Gail, um, he's been heavily involved as well. Uh, the reason, uh, uh, the reason, as we mentioned before, we're, uh, actually able to modernize our website, I'm going to upgrade, um, our website from the, uh, the fairly challenging website that we have now and what it's become, uh, uh, is because actually thanks to Jonathan's efforts, uh, uh, and the efforts of others, we, uh, the town was awarded a $150,000 ADA grant, uh, from, um, from the Commonwealth last December, and, um, and $15,000 of that grant went at the purchase on the website. Uh, so the migration is actually going, um, fairly smoothly. Um, uh, like, we have the support and the partnership from all of our boards, uh, from many of our boards and committees and from our departments, um, and we do expect a rollout, uh, like a public rollout of the website, uh, to now happen, I believe, on October 6th. So, uh, uh, the end is near, but I really, but I really want to thank Leanne for, um, her work on this. It's been, it's been a labor of love and pride for her, um, and, uh, uh, you know, and she's been working on this pretty much, uh, pretty much non-stop, uh, for the last few weeks. Um, I also want to mention that, um, um, I'm going to share with the board, uh, that over the last two weeks, uh, the towns of, um, of Dyton and Berkeley have, um, have, um, have worked, uh, have worked together, um, to apply for like a state, um, a state, uh, like a state joint stormwater grant. And, uh, like, I really, I really want to thank, uh, like, I really want to thank Kevin Partridge, the interim town administrator from Berkeley, um, Todd Pilling, our health agent, um, and, um, Nancy Gulat and Tom Ferry. Uh, like, we, uh, we scrambled in the last week and a half really to get something put together. Um, Nancy reached out, uh, to like a prior engineer who we have a really good track record of working with, uh, who real, uh, who, uh, who also jumped into the fray with us to, uh, like actually help us, uh, like help, help us put together, oh, you know, I believe, like a really strong $90,000 grant application, uh, which will help us address, which will help us address, help us address our MS4 compliance needs. And, uh, we all, we also were able to obtain letters of support, uh, like from, uh, from State Senator Mark Pacheco, State Representative Pat Haddad, uh, the Taunton River Watershed Association, and the, in the, in, in the Taun, in the Taunton River, uh, the Taunton Rivers, uh, the Taunton River, the Taunton River Stewart Stewardship Council as well. So like within a week and a half, we pulled, oh, you know, like I, oh, like I think like a pretty well-done, comprehensive application together, like in everything, like, oh, you know, like we did it in a team effort, and so hopefully, I think we hear whether we're successful in that by, by the end of October. So the turnaround is pretty quickly on that. Finally, I also, I also want to mention that, that we, that we have reported previously that the, that the State Department of Conservation and Recreation have been, have been working, have been working on a redesign of the Sweet Snow, the Sweet Snow, the Sweet Snow State Park, the state portion of it, and they had a public meeting, a Zoom meeting, like early in the spring. They took a lot, they took a lot of feedback from town officials in the community then, and then, and they're having, and they're having another community meeting next Thursday night, September, September 22nd, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. via Zoom. We, and the Trailset Committee, have been sharing, have been sharing the information on Facebook, and we'll continue to do so leading up to the 22nd, but we're also, one of the things, we also, from the town's point of view as well, we're trying to set up a meeting, like with them in advance really, to get a better idea of where they're, oh, you know, where they're at and what they'll be presenting, so we, oh, you know, like all of us, like the town officials who've been working through this as well, have an idea, oh, you know, like about where they're at before, like it really hits at the community at large. So like I reached out to them over the weekend, I know Jeff Cavalo has as well, and hopefully we'll be able to pull that together in the next week or so as well. So, and that's all I have this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mullen, thank you.
Thank you.
Old Business, I don't see anything on the agenda for Old Business, so I will go to the Selectment Reports. I have some great news from the Dyton Water District today. As of September 19th, there will be an easing of the water ban to October 30th. They will return to odd and even days, watering in the morning only between the hours of 5:00 and 8:00 a.m. This will be the same schedule that was in place prior to the ban. So if anyone has any question of what days odd numbers or even numbers can water, and they don't have the card that was sent out to them by the Water District, please call the Water District and they will inform you. Also, any major lawn watering projects, like someone is putting in a lawn, or they've torn up an old lawn and putting in a new one, they must call the Water District to get a waiver, so that they can install and maintain their grass, so it doesn't burn out. Regarding the school district, they had a wonderful start. Oki was a big hit in both communities, at the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school. Rehoboth is singing the praises of the district and of Superintendent Rooney, and they had a meeting Monday night where they did just that. Considering the fact that a little more than a month ago, there was question whether Dyton and Rehoboth would stay together, and the difference a month in Bill Rooney makes. The, Mr. Gail will be working with the school department, addressing ADA issues. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gail, right now it's just the high school, right?
That's correct.
So. Okay. And last but not least, the Dyton Development Industrial Committee. I want to remind everyone that on, I believe it's Thursday, September 21st.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yep.
September 21st, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Bristol County Agricultural School. We will have, be having the Business Expo in joint cooperation with the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce and the Town of Berkeley. This is very exciting. I have talked to members of several communities that are envious of us, and whether it be Somerset or Stone, I attended the MMA conference and in my discussion with them, they thought it was a wonderful idea, and we're looking forward. If anyone's interested in tickets, they should call the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce, and the tickets are $10. Mr. Karen, I have nothing further. If you'd like to speak about Solid Waste.
Sure. Obviously, you both were there this past Tuesday, or Wednesday, whatever it was, Wednesday or Thursday, but doesn't matter. And we made some progress. There is talk of implementing new fees based on usage for the solid waste. They also, although not this meeting, the meeting before, talked about touring the Berkeley transfer station to get, I guess they pretty much have done a great job, and we were going to tour it as a group to see exactly what they do. But I don't know, you guys are there, there's nothing else really to add?
Now, my understanding is there's a vacancy on Solid Waste?
There is a vacancy for one person.
Did they discuss that at the meeting?
No.
Okay.
But we do have an opening if somebody wants to join.
Okay.
They're, they seem to have a trouble with attendance, for one reason or another, not everybody can be there at any given time, so I think they're looking for at least one more.
Okay, no, thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, the Historical Commission, the liaison for the Historical Commission, we happen to have the chairperson here, so correct me if I've given any misinformation to the board. So we, they voted on, they interviewed and voted on a new member for the Historical Commission. We were down two. Hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll be voting on it, we'll have a recommendation as to who should be on the commission, and we'll be voting on it, so we'll be down just one member. We also talked about Phase Two of the historical survey, and we'll be voting later on, hopefully, to sign a contract with Stacy Spies, and hopefully that will go forward. We also, they also talked about the historical survey Phase One, that they were going to provide copies for the town, they'll provide copies for the library, the Historical Commission will have copies, and the Historical Society will purchase a copy, so that we can have, as a member, we will have a copy of it for the, for people in town who have wanting information on any of the houses. I also attended the Taunton Area Chamber of Commerce ribbon-cutting last week at 170 Dean Street, the new facility, and it was a great opportunity to engage with people in the community in Taunton. Dan Higgins, the chairman of the Dyton Industrial Development Committee, was also present, and we, we've had a good conversation at that time, and it was a good group of people. I left maybe around 2:00 o'clock, I don't know if anybody else attended, but...
Yes, I did later on in the day. I just would like to add that the chamber has provided us with representation on the Dyton Industrial Development Commission, and Jonathan Gaggett has been a great help for us. He's a former resident of Dyton, he certainly has Dyton's interests at heart, and he was the main organizer of the Business Expo.
Yeah, he talked about that too, yeah. I talked to him at length, so it's nice to, probably the first time I had a conversation with him, so it's good that he's on our team.
There's some great ideas.
Yep.
New business. I'm going to entertain a motion to move a couple items to the top of the agenda, simply because we have Ms. Gail and Mr. Fernet here, and they've been waiting patiently for quite some time. With that being said...
I'll make a motion that the Historical Commission request to enter into a contract with Stacy E. Spies for survey be called, agenda item E be called next.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Hello, how are you, Ms. Gales? How are you? Good, thank you.
So in your package, you had the copy of the proposed contract to Stacy Spies. She was the only respondent to our request for quotes. Basically, there's not many people out there that are doing this kind of work anymore. A lot of them have retired, and they're just not interested. I guess they don't like the hours, so. This time, this whole thing is being paid for by CPC. The $25,000 came from CPC. There's no Mass Historical Commission involvement with this step of the project, so since it's a non-funded Mass Historical Commission project, the phases are a little bit different than last time. So it would start on October 31st and go to June 30th. There'd be three phases, and pay would be split equally between the three phases, and Phase Three would be completed by June 9th. In the phases, and we're looking at the properties in North Dyton, along Lincoln Avenue, in Mount Hope Village, the Mount Hope Factory, a lot of the housing around there. The last time that part of the survey was done, I think it was like 2003, and so that's very dated. A lot of changes have happened in that area, so we want to get, to have this area documented before we lose any more of the buildings that are there. A lot of, so in the first phase, a lot of the, it's 24 weeks. Ms. Spies would do a lot of the research during that time, putting together the draft forms with the photographs, making a list of properties that are available, that would be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. And then the commission's job during Phase One would be just to support her in the town as she's traveling through the town. Phase Two is when the commission will have their part of the work, will meet with Stacy and review the forms, get our input into it. And during these phases too, I'll mention that the town historian is also involved for information. The last phase is the production of the final products, the final forms. We have, this time we'll have the capability to do the GSI mapping, because that's being finished up now, so we'll just be able to add these properties right onto it, much easier this time, right, Mike?
Thank you.
Yeah. Also, in the, this contract for this Phase Two is the preliminary listing of the streets, the houses that will be looked at for documentation, so. That's that.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
You were satisfied with Phase One as she is...
Yes, yeah. Phase One, I do have the final forms done. The edits, the final edits should be done on the GIS mapping. Everything has to be completed by September 30th, the final reports and all of that. I do plan to, I was talking with Jocelyn at the library, to do a joint program to share that information with the public, so that, she'll talk about the local resources, we'll talk about the forms. I can also come, probably the 28th, and share the final forms with you, a couple of them at least, so you can see the quality of work that was done. They were very detailed. Part of her job too was to get the coordinates to CAI Technologies for the mapping, so she worked very closely with them to get those on the map, and the PDF I saw of that map, it was like, it's going to be some impressive. It's, you know, just your regular layer, but it's historic, and it'll tell you which properties are historic in nature, so.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. It's exciting.
Sure.
You know, very exciting. I've learned a lot too, more than I ever thought I would. I knew nothing about mapping. So what I'm asking is for you to approve this contract, you know, I worked with Mr. Mullen to put it together.
Thank you.
And Ms. Brady?
And Ms. Brady, yeah.
She's the one who does all the work.
At this time, unless there are any further questions, I will entertain a motion to enter into a contract with Stacy E. Spies for the survey update for the, is this the Town of Dyton, or is this the Historical Commission?
Dyton.
The Town of Dyton.
I so move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you for your support.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to go out of order, to move item, letter F, review, discuss, and act on the request to appoint William Fernet as a delegate to the Taunton River Watershed Alliance to the next item on the new business agenda.
I so move.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye, thank you. Mr. Fernet, could you come up to the podium, please? Good evening. Just a minute. Before we begin, I do have a question. Mr. Cavalo? Hello, Mr. Cavalo?
Yes.
Are you a member of the Taunton River Watershed Alliance?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Fernet?
Yes.
On our agenda for this evening is review, discuss, and act, a request to appoint you as a delegate from the Taunton River Watershed Alliance. Could you shed some light on what you would be doing and how this appointment came before us, because we did not receive any written communication from anyone in regards to this proposal?
Right, I just stopped in and talks to some of my, you know, I've got friends in high places in this town.
Well, we also have a process, a way of doing things, so.
Right.
Let's hear what you've got to say about this.
But anyway, I've been associated with these people since before it became the Taunton, you know, the Taunton River Alliance. I did a lot of research with the team to get the river designated Wild and Scenic. That was quite a while ago. Anyway, a lot of the people that are on, on that particular team with me at the time, are not here anymore. A couple of them are, and they keep pushing me to come help, come help, come help, because I know where all the rocks are in the river, and they don't usually, so, but anyway, I told them, I promised them I would come, make an application, and here I am.
Who else from Dyton is on the River Watershed Alliance, do you know?
No one.
No one?
No, there is no representative.
See...
And Dyton and Rainham, I think, are the only people that doesn't have a, do not have a delegate. All the other towns on the river do.
See, my, my problem with this is that we did not receive any communication, official communication from the Taunton River Watershed Alliance.
Well, they don't make the application, I do.
You came before us, for us to appoint you, so we...
As a delegate from Dyton.
As a delegate, but...
To the Watershed Alliance, yes.
We don't have any documentation.
Would you like me to write something down? I got a lot of...
No, I'd like...
And, and my secretary has laid up with a...
I can't speak for my two colleagues, but I would like to have something from the Taunton River Watershed Alliance requesting that you be appointed as a delegate to their, their group organization.
They don't appoint me, you people. They don't appoint me, you people do.
But we need a request.
I'm requesting.
We have an individual who's volunteering to be a delegate to this group. And I think, Mrs. Gula, didn't we, a couple of years ago, we had some ceremony in Fort Worth, or was it for this, for Mr. Fernet, for the work that he did?
Oh, that's, yeah, that's okay. That's not what...
That was a recognition for his umpteen years. I was going to say 50, but I'm not sure. Maybe more than that of service as a member and his work on the river. And yes, you are right. It was, he was recognized at the state level, and he was recognized by the Rivashed Alliance. The other thing I will mention to you about the alliance is they have been active with us in our MVP program and also through Bill Napolitano.
Yeah, he's on, he's on the board.
And, you know, I think everybody knows Bill Napolitano because of the work he's done with us on the MVP Joint Program we were hoping to have with Somerset and Swansea. So, relative to the dam. So, anyhow, all of this work that he's referring to, yes, you're right. He did get, we were at the Marine Museum.
Yes, it was quite an honor. Yeah, it was quite an honor.
Yes, there were state officials there and everything else, but they were recognizing his service.
Yes.
Mrs. Gula?
Yes?
To your knowledge, there is no other resident in Dayton that's a delegate to this group?
No, there is not.
I, the only person I've ever dealt with at that group is Bill Napolitano because of his involvement with, well, Stormwater and the river and our other projects.
Thank you.
I would think it would make sense if whoever is in charge or the leader would send a letter to Dayton saying that Dayton does not have a delegate. And, you know, we would request that, oh, we know that Mr. Fernet is interested. But I would think they need to say something. But that's up to you.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
I would.
Whoa, 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 hold on, hold on. I can't speak for my brothers, hear me out on it.
Have the director send you a letter.
Well, maybe. I don't, like I said, I don't know how I would feel on this. I also know one other thing. Dayton's always been said to be a town with a big "H." And I recognize that you've done over 50 years of service to this community. And the one thing that I don't want to do is disrespect you. I, we try to do things, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's and the proper format is to ask for a letter from the watershed. However, if either one of my colleagues wants to make a motion to approve your request, I certainly wouldn't stand in the way of it.
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint William Fernet as a delegate to the Taunton River Watershed Alliance.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Mr. Fernet? Congratulations and thank you.
Well, congratulations, I don't know, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, could I have a motion to return to regular order of business?
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Review, discuss, and act to close the warrant for special town meeting.
Yes, I, at this point, at this point, Mr. Kim, based on the, based on the special town meeting scheduled that the board approved last month, that had the warrant for the special town meeting on November 1st closed on, by the close of business. On today, September 14th, I would recommend that the board vote to close the special town meeting warrant.
Could you, for the record, read the list of items? So...
Yes, the...
Watching, listening, watching, can review it for me.
Yes, so far, actually, no, not so far. In totality, we have had, we have had the following articles proposed by the, by town departments. We have a proposed, our prior year bills from the town report line and from the police, and from the police department. We have a proposed warrant article relative to, to funding the police station bond payment out of free cash. So, so that, out of cost of that debt service bond payment, like, actually doesn't hit the tax rate in the amount of $368,000, which is something we try to do every year. We have a warrant article for a proposed fire station feasibility study, a proposed warrant article for a police vehicle. We have a proposed warrant article for asphalt basketball courts from Parks and Rec. We have a highway department proposed warrant article for hot street drainage upgrades. We have a highway department proposed warrant article for like a light duty dump truck. We have a proposed warrant article for town hall rail and, like, in stairway improvements. We have a proposed warrant article from the Conservation Commission for additional clerical support. We have a proposed warrant article for a transfer to the stabilization fund. We have a proposed warrant article for a proposed transfer to the, to the capital stabilization fund. We have a proposed, like, a proposed payment to our other post-employment benefit trust. We have a proposed warrant article that would fund the final design and permitting for the Pleasant Street at Money Cove Bridge. We have a proposed warrant article for a border health, for a border health point-of-sale system for the transfer station. We have a proposed transfer, I, from available revenues in the Harbor Master Department to fund the, the repair, the needed repair work for the Harbor Master boat. And then, in the non-funding related proposed warrant articles, we have a proposed, a proposed zoning bylaw amendment relating to solar. We have a proposed, a proposed general bylaw relating to elected and appointed board and committee stipends. We have a proposed, a proposed road acceptance, like, for Stoting Ridge Estates, a proposed road acceptance for Maris Lane, a proposed road, proposed road acceptances for Galway Drive and Kerry Lane. We have a proposed article relative to, to the, to the restatement of the BP Regional Vocational Technical School District relating to the Town of Free Towns' proposed membership. We have a proposed article that deals with the rescinding of the vote for the Dayton Trails feasibility study, given that we received a grant for that funding. We have, we have a house, a housekeeping item that would increase the exemptions, like, for widows and persons who are blind, the same way we did for the veterans at the annual town meeting. And we have a, we have a proposed bylaw from the town clerk relating to the permission that would allow him to amend general bylaws. And we have a proposed, a proposed funding article that would fund a proposed collective bargaining agreement between the town and the dispatchers union. So, so like, all these articles will, they, they will now come forward to the board at the September 28th meeting. Our meeting with the Fincom, our meeting with the Fincom tomorrow night to discuss the review process that they'll have, probably likely at the beginning of October. And, like, we'll be meeting with the, with the capital outlay committee as well because a number of these, like, a number of these priorities are already on our capital plan. And there was, there was one in particular that hasn't, that hasn't been proposed until now. So, we need to evaluate and assess that and make sure that, 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 that any capital funding that does in fact, oh, you know, like, actually move forward, does so with the recommendation of a capital outlay. So.
Thank you. I will, at this time, entertain a motion to close the warrant.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Now, before we vote on special town meeting warrant articles as presented by Mr. Mullen, shouldn't it be appropriate for us to vote on C before we vote on B?
So, those that just...
We have to approve the proposal before we can put it on, we have to approve our warrant request before we can approve the warrant.
So, yeah, like, in that, like, in that, like, in that specific, that, that specific proposal was, like, actually really, really inserted as a placeholder contingent on the board's approval. So, if the board doesn't approve it, then we take the placeholder out and we don't consider it at all.
Okay. So, could we take up item C, board committee stipend bylaw proposal?
Yes, and I'm going to share my screen so we can share it with the folks at home as well. If that's okay?
Sure. That saved me, saved me from reading. I was going to read it.
So, as the board and the public remember, during the FY '23 budget planning process, there was a lot of, there was, there was significant discussion, like, about, about proposed, about proposed stipend increases for boards and committees. And, and a lot of, in a lot of, in a lot of the discussion around that topic, actually, in the discussion with the Fincom, I like, actually focused, I like, on the fact that we didn't, we didn't have an established, we didn't have an established policy and mechanism, you know, that really, like, enshrine our ability to do this. So, like, in hearing the feedback, one of, you know, the directives over the summer, like, into the early fall, was that, was, was that I would propose to the board a propos, you know, like, a proposed mechanism that, that would allow for that to happen. So, what, like, I, so what, so what I propose as a jumping off point to, oh, you know, like, oh, you know, to provide the ability to do this and a mechanism to do this, like, is, like, is a proposed general bylaw that, that would be relative, that would be relative to elected and appointed board and committee, elected and appointed board and committee stipends. And the proposed bylaw would read, that the board of Selectment and Finance, and Finance Committee shall annually propose and recommend the salaries and stipends for applicable elected and appointed board and committee members. And based on the town's fiscal position, review, like, review such salaries for periodic wage adjustments no shorter than once every three years. Said salary, said, said salaries and stipends for such elected, for such elected and appointed board and committee members who have served as a member of an applicable board or committee for longer than three years, may annually receive, like, an additional salary stipend rate representing an additional 10% of the base salary stipend. Only elected and appointed board and committee members who have demonstrated compliance with all local town, with all local town and state requirements shall be eligible to, shall be eligible to receive said salary stipend. So, that's what I wanted to propose, and then we could further discuss it.
Thank you. Are they ready?
Yeah, as it stands right now, do we know what the cost would be?
The cost, well, like, right, like, well, right, like, well, right now, like, it, the only increase would be the, the only increase would be in a, would be in addition, would be an additional 10%. So, like, we would have to go through, like, oh, you know, the, oh, you know, the census of, like, of every existing board or committee that receives stipend, and we can quantify that. Oh, you know, but if, but if, but if, but if it's like a $4,000, if it's a $4,000, if it's a $4,000 stipend, like, it would be an additional, what, $400 on the base. So, like, for, so for like a two, also for, also for a planning board member, like, in their second term, oh, you know, they, oh, you know, they would receive a base, oh, 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 yeah, like, they would receive an, they would receive an additional 10% of their base salary for the, oh, for the longevity and the resourcefulness that they might bring, oh, you know, to the board or committee.
And it says that 10% is going to be for every year.
Every year, right. That's a lot.
Hold on a second. So, no, like, no, like, it's 10% once that would, oh, oh, yeah, so like, once, yeah, so once they, so, yeah, so what, so once they're there for longer than three years, that addition, that additional 10% would be there every year. So, so, yeah, like, it wouldn't, oh, yeah, like, it wouldn't be a one-time only. We, oh, you know, like, we would reflect the longevity that those, oh, you know, that, oh, that, oh, that, oh, that, oh, that, that those, that those board and committee members would bring even in year nine, in year seven, and eight. So, and so forth.
That's a little high.
So, given the example that you gave, if a planning board member's making $4,000 a year, their fourth year, they would get a $400 stipend increase. Would they get it the fifth year also? And the sixth?
No, no, that is always there from, so like, from, so from after the third year, like, it would be the same amount every year. Like, it wouldn't increase by another 10%. Oh, yeah, that 10% would not compound year over year.
So, we should remove the word annually?
May we annually receive?
Because it says annually.
So, yeah, like, so one, yeah, so once they earn that, we're not compounding on top of that, they're going to receive the 10%, but it's not gonna, oh, you know, like, it, yeah, like, it, like, it's not in year four, like, it wouldn't, like, it wouldn't, like, increase by 10% and then, in year five, it wouldn't increase by another 10%. It would be, oh, you know, like, it would be flat. It wouldn't, oh, like, it really wouldn't increase as long as the base doesn't increase, like, after year, like, after year three.
So, should we remove the word annually? For no longer than three years, may receive an additional stipend rate representing 10%?
Yeah, like, I think to clarify the intent, I mean, I, yeah, like, that, that would clarify that, but the intent was not to compound it.
Okay.
But yes.
Now, because we're going to be voting on this wording, correct?
Yes.
So, as, in the motion, we would accept, amend it, as amended?
I'm not, I'm not prepared also to go with the 10% increase also. I'm concerned about that. It's a little bit of money. I would want to know how much this is going to cost. going to cost. And say, for example, and I've mentioned in the past, I don't think selectmen ought to have an increase in their stipend.
Mm-hmm.
But if this passes, we would be getting an increase. So, we have our elections in April, somebody gets reelected for the second term, are they getting that stipend immediately? Are we waiting till the fiscal year to begin? Because this is gonna be a nightmare, I think, for the town of Calhoun.
Okay, no, I get that. So, yeah, like, and to the point, uh, to the point of the boards and committees that don't want an increase as well, that's why after the three years, I specifically use the word "may." Uh, yeah, so, like, it wouldn't be automatic that way. Uh, yeah, so, boards and committees that really don't choose to, uh, actually want that, that they don't have to, they have the prerogative not to, uh, but, um, but I do, oh, you know, like, for, uh, like, oh, yeah, to think through the accounting purposes, oh, you know, like, especially if it's a, uh, if it's a, if it's an elected, if it's an elected April position, we want some clarity that, oh, you know, that, that that 10% or whatever the percentage would be, wouldn't, oh, yeah, like, wouldn't actually begin until the following July.
Mr. Karen?
Isn't there an issue that the selectmen have to be the highest paid?
Fifty what?
The selectmen have to be the highest paid. Somebody told me that.
I, I heard that also, but I, uh...
Because that would rule out giving others stipends that would make them...
Unless the board takes a stipend, so.
Right. That concerns me.
Because I think the, doesn't the board of health make, uh, have a bigger stipend than us?
I wanna say it's just under.
Right, I think they changed it so it was just under.
I believe so.
But the chairman gets 500 more, I believe.
I can check right now if you'd just be able with me. So, yeah, like, uh, so, yeah, like, on the 28th, well, ha- oh, yeah, like, we would, oh, yeah, like, we would have, uh, we would have the opportunity, like, to further, like, refine or change any language as well, but I wanted to start the...
Okay.
Oh, yeah, the process as well, with my phone.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to, to vote on it tonight, but clearly we need changes, I think, anyway.
Now, are we able to leave a placeholder on the warrant?
Oh, yes, it's already there, yes. It's already there by way of this, and we'll have the ability to, uh, like, adjust or change it, or, oh, you know, like, strike it all together.
I think the boards are, are looking for something, not, they, they're looking for clarity.
Yes.
And this is one way of clarifying it.
Uh, yeah, yeah, but, I mean, like, it's really, oh, yeah, like, it's, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, it's really up to your board whether this act, oh, yeah, like, what, oh, whether this actually provides a clarity...
Right.
Uh, you know, that we've been seeking. Oh, you know, like, well, oh, oh, like, oh, like, well, like, if we need, oh, like, or if we need to adjust to scrap it all together.
Okay.
You know, but I wanted to provide something so we can start. And then go from there. But, yeah, like, all the feedback has really helped, like, I mean, like, it makes sense.
And could you check into what Mr. Karen asked?
Yes.
Because I do, do remember reading something similar, um, that the board of selectmen would be the highest paid.
Yeah, like, I will look into, like, I'm not, so, like, I'm not too sure, like, if that is, uh, something we've just alwe- like, if something we've just always done...
Right. See if it's a policy or you...
Yeah, or a general bylaw or something, yes. Absolutely.
Um, with that being said, um, could we vote on B, review, discuss, and act, um, on the special town meeting warrant article update?
So, yeah, like...
Or do you want to table both, B and C?
Yeah, like, on that, we really don't need any action. I just really wanted to, oh, yeah, like, I was, so, like, I was actually gonna provide the board, I was gonna provide the board and the public with, oh, you know, like, with, like, an overview, like, of what the articles were that we'll introduce, uh, but, uh, uh, but there was, like, nothing really actionable with regards to those things this evening.
So we'll take no action on, I, Article B and C?
Uh, yeah, that's what I would recommend if it's okay with the board.
For the record. Okay. No, thank you. Um, any further questions when we get to that?
No.
Article D, review, discuss, and act highway surplus equipment for disposal. Do we have to vote on these individually, or can we vote on them as read?
Um, you can take them as presented, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding the 1997 International Derrick Digger, the 2005 Ford F-350 pickup, and two military-grade diesel pumps?
Any more questions?
I will entertain a motion to approve highway surplus equipment disposal request.
I saw move.
Mr. Karen?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Uh, regarding the Library Building Committee appointments, can we take them as a group, or do we have to vote on them individually?
Um, uh, like, I, uh, like, I don't see there being any issue with taking them as a group. Uh, the, uh, uh, the only thing I would read them into the record, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, like, in, on the library, and on the library employee representative, uh, 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 I would recommend that the board appoint Britt, uh, 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 Britt, uh, Britt Grealish-Rust, um, uh, to be the library employee representative on the committee.
Any questions when we get to that?
No.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint Library Trustee Chairman Ronald O'Connell, Library Director Jocelyn Tavarez, Library Employee Representative Britt Grealish-Rush, Selectman Ken Pacheco, Town Administrator Mike Mullen, Building Commissioner James Agia, ADA Coordinator Jonathan Gale, Historical Commission Chairwoman Patricia Gales, and Dayton resident Mark Tavarez to the Library Building Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made in second. All the, um...
Second.
Second. Uh, all those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you. Any acknowledgements? Okay. Email from David Phillips. Mr. Phillips has emailed us to say that "I would like to resign from the Open Space Committee and continue my volunteer efforts in another committee," which I believe that is conservation, "though it will broaden my knowledge of town government. Thank you for this opportunity, and as always, my passion and the will to learn will continue. Sincerely, David Phillips, Jr. I will entertain a motion to accept this resignation with s- with thanks and appreciation."
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Email from Rachel Vegan, resignation from Open Space Committee. Good evening. My name is...
Dyton Trails Committee, right?
I'm sorry?
Dyton Trails Committee?
Yeah, the agenda actually notes the resignation, uh, from the incorrect, from the incorrect, from the incorrect, uh, committee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Vegan was actually, like, a longtime member of Dyton Trails.
Trails.
Yes, and she was...
My name is Rachel Vegan. I was on the Dyton Trails Committee for two years. I did not go to get sworn in because I need to resign for this year due to family and work obligation. It was a pleasure volunteering for the town of Dyton, working with the members of the Dyton Trails Committee. I will entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Rachel Vegan.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. The next matter, uh, email from Charlene Bonafant regarding resignation from the Board of Health. "After much reflection, have concluded that the organizational culture associated with the position I hold on the Board of Health is not something I can professionally nor personally endorse or support. At this time, please accept my resignation from the Board of Health effective immediately. I wish you luck in the future with all your organizational goals. Thank you for the opportunity. Charlene Bonafant." Licensed social worker. Um, I'll entertain a motion to accept resignation of Charlene Bonafant.
I saw move.
Mr. Karen?
I second it, but with a comment. Why, um, why is she resigning?
Uh, she is stated because she does not agree with organizational...
Has she expressed her concerns with it?
I haven't had...
There was some appoint, there was an appointment, uh, that was put forth that upset her. There was a personnel matter that upset her. Um...
Okay, you don't have to say anymore, that's fine. I, obviously, I seconded it, so.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, are there any further discussion? I'll...
Aye.
All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. With that being said, um, we will need to post that position. In light of all that is coming down the pipe with the reorganization, the job description, and the potential, um, contract negotiations with the Board of Health agent, it would be necessary, one, to post it, and also appoint a representative of the Board of Selectmen to interview the prospective candidates. Um, the makeup of said committee, um, I've spoken to Mrs. Katavia, and she is in agreement that it would be a member of the Board of Health, which she said it would be her, um, as the chairman, and Mr. Mullen. So I will entertain a motion for a third representative, which would be a member of the Board of Selectmen.
I don't mind doing it.
Um, you're making that a formal motion?
Unless Ken wants to do it, but...
No, it's just, it's not on the agenda, so I'm not sure we can, we can do that.
So, in ter- yeah, like, in terms of the taking action, something like relating to the vacancy that was caused by the resignation, oh, you know, I mean, I, oh, yeah, like, I would rec- oh, I would make the, I would make the recommendation that one, oh, you know, that the resignation was all rel- that the how to fill the vacancy was, oh, you know, directly related to the resignation, so it does fall under. But, I mean, if the board wants to do...
Sure. I'll make a motion that, as a result of the resignation of one of the Board of Health members, that the Board of Selectmen appoint a member of the Board of Selectmen to participate in the interview for the new, uh, member of the Board of Health. If that's what you, if that's, okay.
I will entertain a second.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Would it be appropriate to appoint someone tonight to that position?
Uh, yeah, like, if the board would so choose.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to appoint a representative of the Board of Selectmen to that committee.
Uh, I will make a motion that I...
Um, what?
I don't know if I can.
Hold on a sec. I'm just, so I'm just really, uh, like, if the board, so, if, so, if the board, so, like, if the board establishes a, so, like, a committee and not, uh, just, uh, like, a representative to, uh, you know, to basically screen applicants, uh, but, uh, but if the board, uh, um, uh, uh, but if the board designate someone to screen applicants, I'll, I can make a recommendation to the Board of Health, I'll, I'll, like, and then to the Selectmen for an appointment. Um, uh, that, uh, uh, that would be okay if the, uh, like, if the board votes to create a committee, oh, yeah, like, or designate members of a committee that would do so, uh, uh, then, then the committee would fall under the requirements of the open meeting law, and, uh, uh, like, any screening efforts that would be done would... Yeah, like, we'd have to, the screening, I'll, I'll, like, it is a very, like, it is a very fine line on whether to be able to, it is possible to do that in open or exec- in open or executive session. Uh, so, like, so, so if it's a committee, as long as it's done in open session, it's okay.
Okay. So we would appoint a member of the screening committee?
Yes, yes, I, yes, I just wanna be clear, like, if you appoint a screening committee, the other committee would have to follow the requirements of the open meeting law, which I actually don't think there's a problem with. It's a transparent way to go. But I just wanna make sure, uh, you know, that the board has that expectation as it goes forward. Does that make sense?
Would we need to make a motion to approve the screening committee?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we form a screaming, screening committee to, um, appoint someone to the Board of Health, and those members will be the Chairman of the Board of Health, Barbara Katavia, Town Administrator Mike Mullen, and Mr. Karen, will you express an interest in, in that Peter Karen be the representative of the Board of Selectmen?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
Thank you. I just talked in circle for a minute, I'm sorry about that, but I just wanted to make sure...
No, no, we wanna make sure we don't get ourselves in trouble. Thank you. Uh, minutes, approval of the...
Again, I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
It's me, but I went here.
Barbara Katavia, Peter Karen, and Mike Mullen.
Yes.
Yes.
Approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Board of Selectmen's team building minutes of July 9, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
An aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's regular minutes of July 27, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made. Mr. Karen, seconded. Uh, all those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Approval of the Board of Selectmen's special meeting minutes of July 28, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Approval of the warrants. Mr. Pacheco?
Yes, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the warrants for August 31, 2022, 9A-23, $155,238.76, and 9B-23, $272,183.45.
Second.
Motion made in second. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Warrant dated September 7, 2022.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the warrants for September 7, 2022, 10A-23, $110,503.71, 10B-23, $53,358.45, 10C-23, $3,340, and 10D-23, $17,759.71.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Warrant dated September 14, 2022.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen approve the warrants for September 14, 2022. 11, uh, excuse me, 11A-23, $110,974.53, 11B-23, $139,360.39, and 11C-23, $3,949.62.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Public input. I don't see anyone in, out there in Zoom land, and...
Well, Mr. Marvel's getting up again.
Mr. Marvel? Okay. With that being said, uh, we will be entering into executive session. We will not be returning. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel or to conduct contract negotiations... conduct contract negotiations with union personnel, the Dyton Dispatch employees. Also, the approval of executive session meeting minutes of June 22, 2022, and approval of executive session meeting minutes of June 29, 2022.
I'll make, I'll make that motion. We will not be returning to, uh, public meeting. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Mr. Karen?
Aye.
Chairman Hall is an aye. Have a good evening.